I would like to call the February 17th, 2015 Longmont City Study Session Council to order. Could we please start with a roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Santos. Mayor, you have a call.
Okay, why don't we have Troop 128 lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
This is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic Earth stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first person on the list for public invited to be heard is Margaret Bickmore, so please come down and state your name and address for the record. And she will be followed by Steve Pittman.
Can we use one of the mics on this side? I'm Margaret Bickmore, I live at 629 Broad Street, and I need can comments tonight about curbside composting, and two of my children are also going to comment, so if we can get them set up.
Why me first? It's Kay.
Hi, I'm Kay Bickmore, I also live at 629 Broad Street. I'm interested in keeping our planet livable during my lifetime. With the current trends of climate change and other such factors, it is very possible that it could be much less livable within my lifetime. One of the best ways to keep down climate change and the most cost-effective way is composting, keeping compostable goods out of landfills, so curbside composting would be a great thing to bring to Longmont.
Hi, my... Do you want to use this microphone still? Sure. Okay. Hi, my name is Rain Bickmore, and I live at 629 Broad Street. I am a fourth grader at Central Elementary School, which is a Green Star School. That means we recycle and compost almost everything at school. Our classrooms and lunchroom have containers for compostable stuff like food, used tissues, and construction paper, and other kinds of papers that's compostable but not recyclable. But at home, we put a lot of those things in our garbage because they don't break down in our backyard compost bin. I think I should be able to compost just as easily at home as I do at school. I hope you say yes to curbside composting in Longmont, thank you.
Um, am I on? Thanks for listening to my kids. So, uh, thank you also for scheduling tonight's study session. I'm really interested and excited to hear what the city's staff has to present. Those of us who are here as part of the campaign for curbside composting in Longmont really appreciate your taking this matter up for study and consideration, so thank you for that. I love living in Longmont and appreciate what the current and past city councils have done to make it a pleasant and livable, progressive place. Curbside composting is the next obvious thing for Longmont to do and have. As you probably have been reminded recently, the city's 2010 Customer Satisfaction Survey found that 60% of residents supported having the city provide curbside composting at a fee of $2 to $5 per month. I believe that support will only have grown in the intervening four and a half years as curbside composting has been adopted in neighboring communities and in many other communities nationwide. Longmont is the last of the large communities in Boulder County to not have to implement curbside composting. Um, curbside composting, I'm in favor of it because it just makes sense. It's the low-hanging fruit when it comes to reducing greenhouse gas emissions. It's the quickest and easiest way to reduce methane emissions from landfills. Food waste in landfills accounts for a significant portion of methane generated in the United States, and methane is a much more powerful greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide, so it makes a bigger impact than other kinds of gases. Logically, placing compostable organic materials in a landfill to rot anaerobically should be our very last resort. It shouldn't be the default, the easiest, and first option as it is now. Composting these materials instead returns carbon to the soil instead of the atmosphere. It generates very little greenhouse gas, and it's a sustainable practice for the long Curbside composting is popular where it's been implemented, and it's very effective at reducing the waste stream that goes to the landfills. One example is Portland, Oregon. Curbside composting was implemented in 2011. In the first year, the amount of residential garbage collected went down by 40%. People will change their behavior quickly if they have an incentive. Just as recycling of glass, paper, plastics in our street-side bins is now considered the baseline, normal thing to do, recycling of compostable organics will soon become normal as well. So let's get Longmont on board. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Hallward.
Mayor Coombs, city council members, my name's Tracy Hallward, I live at 2131 Steel Street, and guess what I'm here to talk about? Yep, composting. So, a couple of things that I want to talk about is to point out some of the benefits in addition to reducing methane going into the atmosphere, and by the way, methane is a much more potent greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide molecule for molecule and in the long term. But another big benefit of curbside composting for the city is saving landfill space. Approximately 50% of the waste in Boulder County going to the landfill currently is potentially compostable. And landfills all over the country are closing up because they're full. It's only a matter of time until our landfill is also full. So, saving the lifespan on the landfill, I mean, it's not going to be twice as long because not everybody's going to compost everything, but, you know, your options are to then start trucking it further to another landfill or incineration, which causes a lot of air pollution. Another thing about compost is it enriches our soils. It also adds to the carbon storing capacity of our soils, which reduces CO2 in the atmosphere, another greenhouse gas, and it adds nutrients to the soil. There's a lot of nitrogen that comes out of the compost, a lot of micronutrients as well, and that means there's more robust, healthy plant growth. That means whether it's put on city property, agriculture, people's backyards, wherever the compost ends up being spread, that's, that's, um, comes from the city composting. And, that means more healthy plants, that means they're able to fight pests and diseases better, they use less water because the compost holds water storing capacity in the soil. As it increases the structure, there's now a, what would be an easy place to get rid of your shredded paper. So I know that actually has been a concern in talking with people. When you say shredded paper, sometimes that's what makes people go, "Oh, I can put my shredded paper in the compost," and then they're more likely to actually shred more documents because they can't put it in a recycling bin and they have to take it, or they either just put it in the trash. So, potential reduction in identity theft, that might be a little out there. But, other things that we could do with curbside composting on a more industrial scale would be to put in meat scraps, dairy, those kinds of things that we can't do in our backyards. Even those of us who have composted in our backyard, like I have for years, those types of things, we still can't compost. So, again, as we'll all say, we appreciate you considering this, this effort for curbside composting. Thank you.
Thank you. No, Steve Pittman? Oh, I thought one of the kids was Pitt... Sorry. Steve Pittman?
Thank you. I live at 1903 Sundance Drive. I also appreciate the fact that the council has, is holding this meeting tonight to discuss this option. I've found Longmont to be the best-run community I've lived in. I moved here about three and a half years ago from the San Francisco Bay Area, and I was actually surprised, astonished, I guess, to discover that you don't do curbside composting here because we did it where, in the city I lived in, in the Bay Area, and as a matter of fact, that city found that they could reduce the total cost of garbage collection by implementing curbside composting because of the diversion of waste from the, the regular landfill to a local composting facility in the city, so they didn't have to haul the trash. And it diverted debris from the wastewater treatment because people weren't putting it down their garbage disposers anymore. I thought I'd speak tonight because I've actually done curbside composting for many years, and some people think it's a lot of trouble because you have to collect your kitchen scraps and so on, but it actually turns out to be quite easy. You have a container, something like this, that you put your scraps in on a daily basis, you have a little plastic bag that is biodegradable, or, it's not really plastic, it's cornstarch or something, that you put your scraps in, and then you take that out and throw that in your compost bin in the garage every couple of days when this gets full. And this, of course, is small enough to keep in your refrigerator, so you don't keep the stuff out in your kitchen, you keep it in your refrigerator, you empty it. And, uh, once it's out in the garage, it's no different than what you throw in your garbage can. I mean, garbage is out in your garage one way or the other, and so, uh, the, the bin is, there's no additional odor from the bin or something other than that would be from your, your garbage can itself. So, I'm here to say that it's very easy to do. I'm interested to hear what the folks have to say tonight about the cost of this. I'm hoping to hear that it's a break-even situation, but even if it's not, I, I personally thought about going to my local neighborhood and talking to people and finding some guy with a dump truck that would come around once a week, collect all the stuff and haul it off down to the, uh, the facility in Longmont, and so we do curbside composting kind of on our own. I never did get the initiative to do that, and I guess maybe if this measure doesn't pass, I'll have to reconsider that. But, uh, thank you anyway for holding the meeting.
Thank you. Shannon Wheeler.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and city council members. My name is Shannon Wheeler, and I live at 1214 Autumn Court in Longmont. I've been a resident of Longmont for nearly 14 years, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening regarding Longmont's Sustainable Revolution. More specifically, I would like to briefly address a pay-as-you-throw system that could easily be implemented in our, in our city. A comprehensive pay-as-you-throw system would reduce our environmental footprint, increase participation in our in-place recycling program, increase the participation, and reduce the cost of a new composting program, and expand Longmont's environmental stewardship. It should be noted that pay-as-you-throw programs, such as the one we are proposing, have been successfully implemented in a number of our neighboring communities, including Lafayette, Lewisville, and Loveland. In addition, this type of program, along with curbside composting, would be an integral component to the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, which this council collectively agreed to reexamine at the January 20th, 2015 open forum. An improved pay-as-you-throw, throw structure coupled with curbside composting would incentivize the use of recycling and composting containers, give our citizens the opportunity to reduce their trash costs, as well as reduce organic and recyclable material that makes its way into our landfills. A pay-as-you-throw rate structure is simply volume-based priced. Most utilities price similarly, think water and electricity, and we believe that our current trash cart rates do not go far enough to encourage the use of landfill diversion opportunities, such as composting and recycling. For example, the current 96-gallon cart pricing only represents a 35% increase in cost while offering a 100% volume increase over the current 48-gallon pricing structure. This, if anything, encourages our citizens to dispose of organics in our landfill. Most pay-as-you-throw structures include a minimum of a three-cart system. Therefore, this enhancement would be, would be as much about providing the additional options as well as adding a new service. We propose moving from a two-size trash cart and one-size recycle cart to a three-size trash cart, one-size recycle cart, and a new size comp, and a new one-size compost cart. Simply, a superior service and one based on in-place examples locally in numerous municipalities around the country could effectively be implemented in a city of our size. We do not profess to know the correct solution for both composting and pay-as-you-throw structures for Longmont. City staff are certainly the best equipped to make this determination. However, we do hope that this council directs staff to investigate a new pay-as-you-throw system while considering the addition of composting services. In looking around a number of cities in Colorado, as well as numerous cities throughout the country, composting typically is most successful when paired with a structure that incentivizes its use. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Tom Brophy.
Good evening. My name's Tom Brophy, I'm at 918 Emery. Mayor Coombs, council, thank you for your time this evening and considering the curbside composting program. I just moved to Longmont in June, and I came from Lewisville, where I did this six years ago and helped convince council that I was to add curbside composting. That is active to this day, it's in its second year, second five-year contract with increased numbers each year. What I wanted to do tonight is just share some aspects of our other communities around and what they're doing. In Lewisville, they, their system is it's a city utility and recycling is free. You pay for your size trash container and your size compost, and you could mix that up in any way you'd like. Also, I had the pleasure of meeting, being at a meeting this past week down in Denver, and learned about their composting program that they started in 2008. They found in 2008, 57% of the materials were organics in their waste stream. In 2008, they started their program with a grant from RREO, which is the State-Based Recycling Resources Economic Opportunity Act. They started off in 2008 with 3,400 homes and one, one route and one truck. They have, they're at over 10,000 homes now with four trucks and four routes. They plan to continue over the next four to six years until most of the city is covered. When they started with their initial grant in 2008, it was for two years. In 2010, it ran out, and they found that their residents were willing to pay to continue the service, which they've done. Lafayette has just started this past week doing their compost service. They do a pay-as-you-throw system, they're paying a dollar for their recycling, so it's incentivized as well to keep materials out of the landfill. Backtrack a little to Lewisville, their system is set up to composting one week, recycles the next. They haven't really seen a problem with critters or anything. A lot of that also has to do with education, put your yard waste on top of the food waste, et cetera. That's pretty much little things that I've, I've found out there. And again, keeping organic materials out of the landfill and avoiding potential methane emissions is the quickest and easiest and cheapest step for a community to immediately reduce its greenhouse gas emissions. I ask council to move forward to join our neighboring communities in adding curbside compost service, and then Longmont can really show them how it's done. Thank you for your time.
Joan Gregerson. You always come to the mic with a smile.
But I sometimes forget to say my address, so that's my goal today, is to say my address. So, my name's Joan Gregerson, and I live at 1011 Hoover Street, I even wrote it down. So, good evening, Mayor Coombs and council members. So first, I just want to really thank you for your efforts. We, so I'm the founder of Sustainable Revolution Longmont, and as we have talked about before, that, you know, less than a year ago or so, we were having a really difficult time just kind of coming together, working on ideas, and having people to even talk to and consider them. So that's a really huge thing, and we can't thank you enough for being open-minded and progressive, and it's, it's simply a joy, so thank you. I also wanted to mention that, as you may recall, we have the Youth of the Earth Council that's working on the Earth Day event. And, when we had the first meeting, and Councilman Bagley's daughter was standing up there getting all of the, the information from all the different, the different kids about what are things that we can do for the earth when you think of Earth Day, every single one of them said composting. And I was pretty upset because I'm an energy engineer, and I'm thinking LED lights and other things, but, you know, the fact that, I guess that was one thing I just wanted to, to let you know, is that, you know, I think one thing you might be concerned about is how do you train people to do composting? How do you introduce some new thing? So, just to know that you have, like, teeny-tiny block members on, on every street, that, that these kids already know how to do this stuff and can really help lead the community as they have been leading us. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that between 2010 and 2013, I spent most of my time in South Korea. And, in three different cities, I guess you called it pay-as-you-throw. I didn't know. Just there, there was no trash service. When you went to the grocery store, there was a pile of bags, and for somewhere between 50 cents and $2, you could buy a bag, and at your apartment, there was recycling and composting. So, I became a master at composting and recycling, and, not that the bags were that expensive, but it was just, it was a challenge. So, you know, I could go a month on one bag for 50 cents. And then I, I moved back to Colorado, stayed in, in Niwatt where there was curbside composting, moved, made my home in Longmont, and suddenly there wasn't. So, what I, okay, what I knew how to do in Korea and could do so easily, suddenly I couldn't here. So, thank you very much for, for your open-mindedness, your consideration, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Edward Regal.
My name is Ed Regal, and I live at 3232 Mariner Lane in Longmont. I've been a resident of Longmont, come April, 32 years, in three different homes. And, I'm the chairman of the Board of Directors for the Longmont Association of Realtors. And, it is our understanding that the city council may consider a mandatory composting fee for Longmont residents. And I believe it was either in 2010 or 2011 that the discussion was that you were going to initiate, and I think it was initiated, that there was some composting going around because I saw a different bin that was out there, and you were doing a test of that. I believe it was 2011 that that occurred. Now, the Longmont Association of Realtors appreciate the desire to decrease the amount of waste and/methane that is added to our city landfill. However, we do not support the concept of a mandatory composting fee. And, don't get me wrong, in my second home in Longmont, I was on a third of an acre, a lot of waste from just grass, and I had a four-by-four-by-four composting bin, and I composted. I'm, I'm all in favor of it, not necessarily in favor of a mandatory fee. Composting, it's been mentioned, requires education, and I do believe that we can have our retail establishments, the local hardware stores, and some of the big chains participate in that. They did it in Boulder 15 or 20 years ago, where they subsidize the composting bins that you put in your yard. You had to be careful on that because it did invite critters if you did not know what you were doing. Not everybody has the time, knowledge, patience, or space for composting. It does add a third container that if you live in an area that has an HOA, and you can't keep your trash recycling, and now composting receptacles on the outside takes up a lot of room into a garage situation. We advocate the use of incentives to encourage the residents to compost rather than forcing everybody to pay for whether they want it or not. I don't think we have to add another mandate to the list of items required by property owners, but I think there could be a win-win situ, uh, solution to, on the composting issue here. If the city council feels that the composting program is a priority, then let's implement an educational campaign, convince residents that they should try composting, and show them how it could be a benefit to them all.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else from the audience that would like to address the council at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. I'm Strider Benson, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. I've been composting for the last 44 years. Even when I had a home in Chicago, I created kind of a fennel garden just by reworking and hand-doing every inch of soil. I have dug about, oh, quite a number of eight-by-eight-by-four-foot compost pits by hand all around the county. You can even reclaim desert that way. I had a compost pit at my home when I had a home in Longmont five years ago, and I grew a 40-ounce heirloom tomato on it. So, yeah, real nutrition. I wanted to, to mention one thing that we're facing electorally. There's a guy named Scott Walker, Governor of Wisconsin, who is a high-ranking person in the presidential issue. He just put forth the budget in Wisconsin, and secretly on page 582, he completely exterminated the mission of the University of Wisconsin, taking away $300 million, and changing the mission, which is stated to facilitate the pursuit of truth, and changed that to promote the employment necessities of the corporations, or some, something like that. That is severely dangerous type of thing that we better be awake about. Wisconsin has had the lowest economic growth of any Midwestern state, with the exception of Kansas, who is doing the same thing and pretty much bankrupt. with the exception of Kansas, who is doing the same thing and pretty much bankrupted themselves. So let's pay attention to nature, and let's also pay attention to the electoral process. This is a serious issue in this world. And as Rachel said 60 years ago, "The world is in an uproar. The danger zone is everywhere."
Thank you. Thank you, Strider. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak at first call, public invited, you heard?
Hi, thanks for the opportunity. Sheri Moi, 2113 Rangeview Lane. Hands down, Longmont has the best municipal, the only municipal, but also the best trash and recycling service in the county. And, you know, definitely along the Front Range, one of the lowest costs, you know, the residents get in the whole state. But it's time for a revamp, and that includes the curbside compost, which people have spoken to, and then a really great opportunity to do a fee restructure, a pay as you throw, you know, putting in those incentives. The current system is, you know, just a little bit fair, because it's, it's not reflective, you know, of the true cost of people who are seriously trying to do some reduction. Myself, I have three compost bins, have been composting for years, but what I don't put in is weeds, grass kipings, bones, leaves, only so much, you know, leaves, because there's so many leaves, so then I have to haul all that stuff down to Martin Street. I don't put in sticks and twigs, especially after storms. I don't put in paper bags or paper napkins, and I don't put in shredded paper. So all of those things are, for those of us who are composting, you know, are, are added things that we can do more of. The city has, again, because we have awesome services, we have paper shredding events, which are hugely popular. And shredded paper in our, in our recycling bins really provide, is really problematic at the recycling center, because it gunks up the gears and stuff. People don't know that, so they put it in. So, you know, it, it kind of is also helpful to kind of get the shredded paper out of the recycling stream. Great that Charlie and the City offered that event, but it would be so convenient for people to just throw their shredded paper right in their, in their compost. It'd be a way for them to conveniently and responsibly deal with their sensitive documents. One more thing that I don't think was mentioned was by getting 50% of our waste stream and organics out of the trips to the landfill, that saves staff time, it saves petrol, it saves CO2 emissions, and it saves wear and tear on trucks. So I just also wanted to add that those of us who are here, and dozens of other people who have signed the petition and have indicated they would, we're, we're not here to say, "City, do this," and then sit back. We've got your back, we want to help with the effort. We've talked about even, you know, being compost neighborhood guys with yard signs saying, "Compost questions, see me." So we are here for the short and long term to help support this program. Thank you again for considering it.
Thank you, Sheri. Is there anybody else that'd like to come speak?
I have 20 seconds to announce a city meeting.
Go ahead.
Next Monday night, community invitation to all by the Longmont Multicultural Action Committee and Dr. King Committee and Front Range Christian Fellowship at the Agathe Center right across from Wal-Mart's. We're going to have forum and stories of the civil rights movement, and I will be a speaker there next Monday at 6:00. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, I will now close the public invited to be heard. It's time for special reports.
Mayor, your first item, Mr. David Starnes is here, redevelopment manager. He's here to present on redevelopment and urban renewal update.
Good evening. Mayor, Members of Council, David Starnes, redevelopment and revitalization manager with the City of Longmont. So tonight, I'm here to provide you an update on some citywide redevelopment efforts that are underway. I have representatives from two of the major ones in the city, the Butterball Redevelopment and Village at the Peaks, who are here to give a brief update in terms of specifically their project. I'm mostly here to update you on the reimbursement in terms of the Village at the Peaks projects as well. So. As you can see, this might be the last picture you see of this building here at First and Main. This was taken a few months ago. I went out this morning and took an updated picture. So things are very far along in terms of demolition of the former Butterball plant. Brian Baer, a representative from the Development Group, is here to kind of give an update on plans in terms of activities and concepts of what he's looking for for this first phase. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Brian Baer with 150 Main. Thought we'd give you just a quick update. I was thinking the last time we, we did this was before the end of the year, and we've made significant progress since that time. That actually looks like a vintage photo, but it wasn't from today. What's interesting about the demolition is that a lot of people have said to me, "You haven't started the demolition yet," because they go right up Main Street, and they don't turn off any of the side streets, and you wouldn't know the difference. But if you loop around, you'll see we've made significant amount of progress. We're probably 75% complete with the demolition, and then there's, as you know, some time involved with hauling the things off-site and, and some of the materials. But we're excited, we've made a lot of progress, and haven't had any big surprises so far, so that's all good. The other thing we wanted to show you was the next slide. Do I click it? Just here? There we go. Wanted to give you a, is there just one slide here? Okay. Just a, a quick update of what the site, it's starting to come together. We're actually doing another submittal this week, which will have a lot more detail as to what's happening on the site in terms of, once the, the deconstruction is done, what we're going to do with the construction and going vertical. The site that you see here is, is the 150 Main property, which is six and a half acres, bound by Main Street on the, on the left side of the west, Second Avenue to the north, Emery to the east, and then the railroad tracks to the south, which sit north of First Avenue, as you all know. This is sort of the layout of, this really just shows the first floors of the buildings, and what represents five different buildings. We're still looking at around 300 units, as we've always been talking. Those would be multifamily, for rent apartments, and about 10,000 square feet of commercial, which sits along Main Street, you see in the pink that's shown there. We have probably about 60% of the parking is structured parking, so it'll be underneath the buildings, a covered parking. And then we've, we're showing some what we call parking rooms hidden inside the buildings, so it'll be more surface parking. The main, the main entrance area will be up here off Kimbark. We're actually bringing Kimbark back, which it was vacated years and years ago when the plant was built over that street. So we're bringing back our traditional lot block pattern with a block here, and then a block here, and which just enables a more creative and a more efficient development scheme. So at the end of this week, we'll be submitting this next submittal, and then after that, you'll start to see some of the vertical concepts of what we're doing with some of the buildings, all of the buildings, fronting all of the, of the different streets. So that's my update. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Well, I really appreciate you coming to our community and taking the risk to invest in a project. It's kind of an acre on the south end of our entryway to our community, so thank you.
You bet.
So moving on to the other large redevelopment area in the city, and this is Village at the Peaks, over at the former Twin Peaks Mall, urban renewal area. And as indicated in your packet, construction of the mall redevelopment is well underway. Alan Ginsburg is here, and he'll be giving a brief update in a few minutes. But just to kind of update you all in terms of the agreement, the four-party agreement between the developer, Newmark Merrill Mountain State, the City of Longmont, the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority, and the Twin Peaks Metropolitan District. As part of our agreement, you know, the, the bond amount was a total of 27.5 million. Through the end of the year 2014, we have reimbursed eligible cost approximately 15.8 million. And of that 15.8 million, 4.25 was towards the land acquisition as the eligible cost. Another 5.6 million as part of acquisition cost and purchase price funds. This is related to the eminent domain litigation. Site development costs, and these are offsite and onsite site development and public infrastructure. That's totaled about 5.7 million through December. And then the last piece is the eligible building facade of advancement, that's about $244,000. So with that, I will turn it over to Alan. He's here to kind of give an update on construction schedule, tenants, and leasing activity.
Thanks, David, and Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be before you again, so look forward to sharing a little bit. And just sitting here and listening and thinking about three years ago, when we were, we were in the thick of getting this all going, the world's changed a lot. And in Longmont, I think it's really changing for the better, and, you know, you're shepherding a, a good, good city to, to its next destination, so. Right now, we've, we've made some announcements recently on leasing, but I'll just bring you all up to speed. We're about, we're getting very close to about 80% leased now on the project. We announced Vision Works, we have announced Chuck and Don's, who is a high-quality pet food provider, that's coming in to Cherry Creek, and they're coming here, and a few other Highlands Ranch, a few other communities in Colorado from Minnesota, Fuzzy's Tacos, Party City, and, and some others. So the leasing is a progressive situation. The more tenants we lease to, the more other tenants get excited. And so it's a constant work in progress. And then as far as what's under construction right now, I've taken most of you to see the site recently. But what everybody would see from the boundary of the site, the biggest building on site is the Regal Cinema Building. You can see the, the large walls there and the steel parapet, which will be the, the top height of the building. And so that's under construction. The Whole Foods building is under construction. You can see the steel for that. And so that's, we're just putting the roof on right now. We're going to turn that space over to them in April, is the plan we have right now, provided the weather continues to be more or less cooperative, which it has been. And then the Village, we just initiated the construction of all the Village buildings. So those will, there's, there's ground stabilization and some other things that have to happen there, and then we'll start to go vertical on those. We poured the concrete on Wyatt's this past week, which is in the Whole Foods block of buildings as well. And let's see, Gold's, T-Sports Authority, and Party City. We've gone in and done all the demolition on the building there. We're reusing the building there that was formerly the Dillard's store. And so we're in the midst of that. We've ripped off the front and reconstructing that building now. We had to pare it down to its bones, and, and then we have to build it back out. And so that process is, is underway as well. Sam's is committed to us to commence construction next year. And with the work we're doing on site right now, they've asked us to do, we're, we're already doing work on their behalf. And then the big news that I think everybody wants to know, and I'm, I'm very committed to making it happen, is opening the project in October. So we are definitely focused and right now on schedule to open in October, so barring something we don't know, you know, we're set to open then. And can't set quite the specific date yet, but this summer I will be able to set a date. And everyone in the community will know. So that's where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ellen? All right, we appreciate the update.
You bet. Thank you.
So I just have one more slide. So, as you know, there's a vacant Walmart next to the mall. And some of the good things that we're seeing now is because of the mall redevelopment, there's been some reactive reinvestment in some of these older obsolete buildings. And so today, we're looking at an active re-tenanting of the former Walmart store. It's a retailer near Longmont, but they have preliminary plans for the site, and they're working with the city in terms of, you know, bringing this new retailer to Longmont that currently isn't here. So some of these things that we're seeing today in terms of the mall redevelopment, you know, we hope that will have spin-off benefits in terms of bringing additional retail to the city and helping provide those types of services and retail goods and services that the community doesn't have, but they've been asking about. So with that, that's my update for the urban renewal and redevelopment. Are there any questions for anyone?
Yeah, one question, you know, the, the Ring Road, some of those restaurants like IHOP that were, looked like they were closing, and now they're coming, are they coming back basically because the malls? I mean, it just seems like the area around that is getting more...
I might turn that over to Alan, maybe, because, you know, he talks to a lot of adjacent owners and properties, and he's got a much better feel in terms of his discussions with some of those other vacant buildings that are around there. If he wants to.
And those were, the Applebee's and the IHOP were both franchise units, to my knowledge. I think, I think Applebee's may have been corporate. And they had made the decision to close and put their properties up for sale, actually. And what happened is, as we bought our project on board and it became real, they decided to take corporate dollars and make them corporate stores. So now, the corporate entity for IHOP bought the property and basically redeveloped it, and Applebee's went ahead and remodeled and reopened. And we've also attracted another company to town that's, unfortunately, I don't get to get them on my project, but Boot Barn will be taking the old Pier 1 space. And I kind of focus very much on Boot Barn, because I think they're a great retailer. And, you know, they, they opted for another building, but good news is, they'll be here. So, yeah, we're seeing that happen quite a bit right now.
Well, thank you. Councilmember Christensen.
I have a question, and maybe this is better directed to Ellen, but I don't know. This is about this shopping center, which is also managed by Newmark Merrill. I'm really excited to see something happening to the abandoned Walmart. But there are also, if Party City is moving over there, do you have another tenant for the empty places next to my favorite cake place? I want to have my favorite cake place stay there.
Absolutely.
But I mean, that, that vacates it, and then, you know, then we have another problem with cannibalization, so.
Yeah, well, when we got involved with that property, those owners came to us and asked them to help us with that and that location that they own, and then another location up in Greeley Shopping Center. And at that time, it was a Party America store, and they were going to let the lease run out and close, because the store doesn't fit their current prototype. So by working with them, we were able, because of our relationship with the owners of that property and then the work we were doing on this project, to, to put that in abeyance until we got further into timing and construction. And then what happened is basically Party City committed to relocating, they're, they're increasing the store size by 50%, and then investing a great more, a great deal more capital to make it a contemporary prototype. So, you know, in many cases, what's not seen is, you know, a store like that is actually relocating to improve their presence as opposed to leave the market where they couldn't have a prototype store. So that's the good news, and then we're working very diligently to backfill that space, you know, as we speak. So I don't have anybody yet, no. So, but definitely part of the plan. Hey, for Ramon's is just fine.
Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. My question's really for David, and also, I guess, partially for Jim, but Mr. Walden doesn't have to come down to the podium. I know that we, one of the big unknown questions was this idea of cannibalization. And I know while, you know, some of the stores that have closed, that, that were formerly located in the mall, especially, I'm thinking of Maurice's, closed in the mall, they're opening in Harvest Junction, that's kind of a moveover. Can't really consider that cannibalization, but certainly the situation with Sports Authority and a party store, a light party store moving over. I just want to make sure we are cognizant of cannibalization and to keep track of what's happening when, you know, whether or not a party store is branded one way or another, it's a party store and a party store. So you lose that vendor, and it moves off into the urban renewal and tip space. So I just want to make sure we are keeping track of the cannibalization, especially if we've got other store locations, you know, T-Mobile or Verizon moving into the Village at the Peaks. And eventually, a year later, they close the store, I would still, a store location in another part of Longmont, I'd still consider that cannibalization, whether or not, you know, there's got to be a certain kind of window to count that. So I just want to make sure we are cognizant of the cannibalization rates here.
Yes, Councilmember Robinson, Members of Council. Yes, we're in the process, I'm actually of, you know, of updating the... Yes, we're in the process, I'm actually of, you know, updating the revenue projections, the TIP analysis based on the latest tenant announcements from the developer. It'll be an ongoing process, and we'd be happy to bring that to you, back to you when it's completed. And we'll have updates in terms of estimates, in terms of what we think about the cannibalization impact and the city's surplus and the backfill and so to speak. But yes, we are definitely tracking that and working closely with Jim on that as well.
All right. Just, you can't really forget about that, because as much activity as you see, and it's a really good piece of news that the Pure One imports is going to be full, it can't just be in that one little microcosm of the city, because if the rest of the city revenue goes down, we then don't have the revenue that we should to support the general fund.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other questions, so thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Mayor, your first study session item is curbside composting discussion. And I believe Bob Allen, Public Works and Natural Resources' operation manager, will be introducing this item.
Mayor Coombs, excuse me, members of city council, I'm Bob Allen. I'm operations manager and Public Works and Natural Resources. We're here tonight to talk about, or at least kick off a discussion on curbside composting. What this presentation is, is really just a discussion. So we haven't prepared a lot of extensive financial information or alternatives. So we invite you to comment as we move along. I'll start first with a little background on our current programs, but as we get into the composting discussion, I really invite you to ask questions and stimulate it with your own thoughts and ideas. So presentation goals, I'll quickly review what we're doing now and a little statistical information. Some of it is information that we actually presented back in 2011, when we last adjusted or altered rates. We'll go into kind of composting concepts and issues. Once again, just some really general cost analysis, not specific information yet at this time, but you'll have an idea of what costs will look like. And then in the end, seek whatever direction you choose to give us, if any, tonight, to come back with more information or start looking, I think, in more details at alternatives. So a quick review of where we've been, at least in recent history with the program. The landfill Longmont used to operate on Highway 119, closed in 1992. That was a change for the program and caused us now to go to the Front Range, excuse me, the Front Range landfill with our solid waste. And then, of course, with our recycle, we go to the Boulder County Recycle Facility in Boulder. Spring cleanup, Longmont residents will remember that program back in the 80s and 90s. That was discontinued in 96. The purpose for that was, really, it became cost prohibitive. It would have driven rates to continue with that program. But that was a pretty extensive program to actually clean large items and debris from yards that residents would haul to the curbside. So it involved pretty extensive work with dump trucks and loading equipment to move through the city. I think the last cost estimates for that program are about $500,000. So that triggered some changes in Longmont, including a lot more illegal dumping that we've had to address in the intervening years. Sanitation fleet was automated in 99, and that led to reductions in staffing. We had a lot of retirements and then reassignments of staff. No one was laid off at that time. But that was also an initiative to improve safety working around sanitation trucks. Rates were increased in 2002, and then shortly after that, or a few years after that, we were able to initiate a full, single-stream recycling program. Sorry, I had a cold last week, and I'm still recovering. Rates were most recently increased in 2012. And what was unique about that increase was, as opposed to previous years where we raised rates quite a bit, and then over many years, in fact, 10 years, they converged with costs, we went to a more phased approach. So we had an increase in 2012, 2014, and another one's programmed in 2016, and we're hoping that those are tracking a little closer with costs now. At that time, we were starting to see scope creep into special services that were starting to drive costs. And so we, through your direction, refocused that mission more to curbside services in a way from trying to offer everything that the city might want sanitation-wise. So we still rely on private haulers to provide special services in some areas. Current services, clearly, our core services are curbside recycle and trash collection programs, and then our waste management fee programs, and I'll show those on a separate slide here in a minute. Our supplemental services that are really paid for through the fees for our curbside programs include an annual household hazardous waste collection program, and then free use of the hazardous materials recycle facility in Boulder. We have the recycle and tree limb diversion center that is free to residents. We do charge for non-resident use of that facility. Monthly shredding events, right now, we're able to fund, and they're fairly popular. Spring tree limb, and then our fall leaf collection program. And then we do offer a few à la carte services, large item pickup and dumpster rentals. And those are really a use of just the extra capacity we have for our multifamily program. We do have extra, we have to keep on hand extra dumpsters for that program, and we're able to rent those out. But there are, at times, is a backlog for the use of those services. We don't, we can't always provide the demand, particularly in the summer months, but we are mostly able to fulfill it. Current fees, the most popular container is our 96-gallon trash container, $14, $14 a month, and that jumps to $15.27 in 2016. And then $9.65 for our 48-gallon container, which is our smallest container, and that goes to $10.42 in 2016. Waste management fee services, we charge $2.96 per month to residents, to all residents. That funds sanitation services for the city, parks and open space, neighborhood programs and illegal dumping, all the trash at civic facilities, Main Street Trash and Recycle, some special events, and our educational programs, and then some of the administrative fees that we pay for human resources, information technology, finance services.
Could I ask a question? On the previous slide, where you talked about the current monthly subscription rates? You know, if we roll out a new program, I'm just saying if we roll out, it seems like the whole solution is a combined solution of trash, composting, recycling, and we need to consider kind of the holistic thing. So almost, to go along with this, you might want to add, you know, if we did this, a 24-gallon, another size down, because someone that's really, really good at recycling and composting doesn't need as big of a, I mean, we only have a 48, and we only put it out sometimes every other time. So, I mean, that's another option, or another tool in the arsenal to look at. And this whole concept of pay as you grow, the way I understand it is, you know, there's a certain cost associated with just driving up the street and picking up a container, whether it's large, small, you know, maybe you say it's a buck, I don't know what the, but let's just say that's a flat fee, just the drive-by fee to pick up your trash container. Then there's the volume fee, and let's say, for example, for the medium size, it's $4; for the large size, it would be $8; and for the small size, it would be, you know, $2, you know, if you scaled everything, just the volume. But then you can do like we do with electricity and water, you could actually incentivize more recycling and more composting by basically making the large fee a little bit more and the small a little bit less. So that kind of incentivized, you know, the behavior of composting. And that's, you know, kind of the way I think of this thing as a holistic of maybe an approach that, you know, doesn't force people to compost. They can choose not to compost, but they're going to pay a little bit more for their extra volume than, I mean, just a thought. I mean, that's kind of my thinking about the whole problem.
Mayor Coombs, you've addressed about half the issues we're going to bring up later, so you've cut my presentation in half. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember McMillan?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I didn't have an extensive comment. I just wanted to know, when was the last time you raised the waste management fee?
Mayor Coombs and council, to my knowledge, that fee was set at $2.96 originally, and it's never been increased. So I think I mentioned the large item pickup and dumpster rentals. Those are extra fees that residents pay for those services à la carte. And then the waste diversion center is only a fee for non-residents. Subscription types and numbers, we have about 27,500 single-family.
Councilmember McCollum would like to ask a question.
Yeah, okay, Bob. The previous slide had large item pickups. How does that compare to private hauler fees for those same components?
Mayor Coombs and council, that's a hard comparison, because we limit that to two items. Most private haulers wouldn't have that limitation, but it's probably in range for, you know, a single large item pickup, if it's picked up with a service, with a regular curbside service. If it's picked up independently, that's probably cheaper than what a private hauler would come out and pick up without the other business in the community. And those rates were substantially increased in 2012 because they were extremely low. They were almost a giveaway at that time. We have a little over 1,500 multifamily accounts, and then we have 5,500 residents that pay the waste management fee that are multifamily but are not served the curbside services by the city. So all they pay is $2.96 a month. As you can see, the 96-gallon container is the most popular with our single families at about 80% of the residents, and 20% use that smaller container size. Our revenues, the first four I've already covered. We also receive revenues from commodities. That's a really variable market. It can be up and down in any given year. So that's the recyclable materials that we sell off, occasional small grants, but it's a pretty small fund. Annual costs, operating costs in about the $6.5 million range. Most of that, 72% of that, is for the curbside programs. You can see administrative fees, and the few special services we do offer consume the second-most amount of that, our total revenues. Capital costs, we rarely actually have capital costs, other than equipment trucks on this fund. Here recently, we have had some. We've had a need to renew the facility out on Airport Road, and then our facility, our waste diversion facility, will be needing some improvements. We had flood debris costs, $800,000. We're hoping those don't drive rates. They did consume quite a bit of our reserves, which we have to carry because it is such of a small fund. But for now, it looks like we're able to cover that. And then improvements at the landfill site, the closed landfill that we still have to manage. It's rare to have that kind of a cost there, and we probably won't have that again for many, many years. But this is probably the most we ever see, but our fund is viable and easily will cover these costs. I think one of the residents mentioned our, a little bit of information on our survey, so this will be a little redundant. As far as our regular curbside services, we've had very good ratings. I think in 2010, we were at 89% excellent or good. Our residents thought we were excellent or good service. We were at 90% in 2012, and I believe, at least the draft of the most recent survey shows us at 91%. So we've actually been trending upward, or at least staying fairly level, but at a, I think, at a high, high level, high rating. And then these data you've seen before, and they were presented earlier, but 60% of the respondents to the 2010 survey supported composting, if it was in that $2 to $5 range. We presented some options for a mission, more to kind of underscore our discussion of services and rates back in 2012. And this was the mission that really fit the choice that you made at that time, and it's putting our eggs in the basket of curbside services with some limited supplemental services. So we're a pretty small operation, and that's what we're good at. We're good at curbside work. Our goals, ongoing goals, to support that mission, reliable and efficient, customer responsive, try and keep rates affordable, divert as much waste as we can from landfills, modernize, keep the operations as modern as possible for the Front Range region, and, you know, deliver common services, those that would be expected within a community. Strengths of our program, and these are important for our discussion about composting, and that's why I presented them. We did go cover these a few years ago, and so I'm kind of reiterating them here. But as I said, efficient curbside services, we're really, we're an operations group, and we're very good at doing that. And we're also able to provide services to the city. The park service alone is a pretty extensive service, and we're happy to be able to do that, do that pretty efficiently. We don't have debt, and our assets are in good condition. We own the waste diversion center and part of the public works facility out on Airport Road, the fund does. So it's got a strong balance sheet. We're able to coordinate our, in particular, curbside services with our snow removal operations, so we rarely miss a day or miss a route. That's a strength that we offer. We can deploy integrated deployments and make sure that we can get through some difficult spots and difficult storms, and we think that's a strong asset for the program overall. We have a direct connection to the community, as evidenced by some of the comments you've heard here tonight, the ability to come and talk with you and discuss policy and connect back to our community. Weaknesses, we have a limited customer base. It's a scale-size issue. We have limited excess capacity to do anything new and different. We don't own, or we don't spend money on a lot of excess. We purchase what we need to provide the services that are approved, and we have a little capacity on top of that so that we can do those reliably. On-demand services are a challenge. If we could spread on-demand services, like dumpster programs or large item pickups across three or four cities, we could probably tool up to do a lot more of that, but it's hard to do with a small operation. Service changes present challenges. This is a little redundancy here, but it's a small fund with limited resources. So what that means is that if you want to change, we have to collect the money first or find a way to borrow it before we can actually launch the service. So it's hard to make changes in this type of a program.
So if a lot of people wanted the smaller containers, it'd be hard to finance the 24-gallon option, or it'd be something that you'd have to consider in your, you know, how do you make that happen when you need additional containers?
Mayor and council, for smaller purchases like that, I think we're fairly well-covered. But when we have to buy trucks, or if we were to equip the entire city for poly carts for a compost program, we're talking about having to most definitely change rates to do that. Smaller changes, we do, I think, program enough access in our revenues to make sure we can cover things. I think we could do that.
Okay.
We have a limited... We have a limited internal capacity.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry for my scratchy throat. But Bob, if you're considering people, citizens, that are very motivated to bring curbside composting, couldn't you offer people, instead of doing the wholesale buying of composting carts across the city, people that wanted to compost, they could purchase the cart themselves if they wanted to make that investment, couldn't they?
Mayor.
And then relieve the utility from doing that, and then in effect, they'd own that cart?
Mayor and council, there are probably numerous options that could be considered to phase in any program, and we're not saying that's not possible. But what we don't have is we don't have the capabilities that a lot of the private haulers around here have, where they often will have that excess capacity in play so that they could very quickly mobilize to provide services to a city like Longmont, new services. We would take, it would be more creative for us to find solutions.
Yes.
That situation is really that economy of scale that we don't have because we have the fixed customer base.
Yes.
One other question related to carts, though. What's our capacity for, I'm just noticing in my own alley that we've got maybe about 20% of the recycling carts now have broken lids. They seem to be pretty fragile. So what's our retention rate just on normal replacement? And my thought is that we're going to be, you know, having some replacement cycle, is there a way we could phase things in?
Mayor and council, this would be a really good time for me to introduce Charles Camanidis and address that question.
That is talk trash, right?
Yes.
It's talk trash. Mayor Coombs and council, that's a great question about the container lids, and I've been actually working with the lid manufacturer, and we've been replacing container lids ongoing. And just, we just need to get a call from a customer, or if our drivers are writing down where the container lids are. We have that, frankly, at this point, built into our, what we're working on, and basically we're getting credit for the broken lids, and it's just our labor to get out there and get them done. So since we're here, if anybody has a broken lid, they just give us a call, and we'll get it done. Thank you.
Councilmember Santos.
And Charlie. What's that number?
Anybody can call our call center at 303-651-8416, and we'll schedule a lid replacement for you anytime. Or if you want to get a smaller trash container, we can do that at the same time.
Thank you. But for Councilmember Santos, that number's 8418. So the last point here, we have a limited internal capacity to study, plan, and re-engineer services. And what that means is that we are an operations group, and unlike a lot of our other services, we really don't have a professional group within sanitation. So if we were to do extensive studies or look at changes in diversion from compost or trash to compost to recycle, we may have to contract that type of a study with someone else. Charlie and I represent really the professional capabilities within our sanitation group, and so those are limited, and our expertise really is in operations. So that's a little different than in our utility and streets program, where we have, you know, engineering groups that provide more of those professional services that we just don't have here.
Councilmember Bilyer.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So am I hearing that we may not have the capacity for this, but we could hire a private firm that could do it at cheaper and easier?
Mayor and council, I was referring to our studying different options and alternatives. But you asked a question that we are going to discuss a little bit later, too, about other options. So future composting in Longmont, this is where I really want the engagement, and you're there. So I'd like to just go through quickly, and maybe more for those who are in attendance here, what the planning approach would be if the city were to pursue composting. I want to quickly reveal a couple of studies, reports that we looked at, that were in the packet. Then we're going to go into potential issues and pros and cons. I should state, and I hope that I've demonstrated in the past, that I don't advocate either way. My strength and my goal is that whatever you decide, we're going to do it efficiently and reliably. So this is truly your discussion to have, but we would like to facilitate that and at least give you some of our thoughts on pros and cons. You may have other ideas, and we invite those into the discussion. So planning, if we were to pursue an option for composting in the city, that starts with this, a discussion and direction from you. We would then move to taking that direction and developing operating plans that would fit that, or an alternative, alternatives for operating plans that would fit that direction that's given to us. You know, most notably, looking at the impacts of composting on our trash service overall, educational programs, logistics, what we would need to launch a program or a range of programs, and the possibility of a cost-benefit analysis through our department's sustainability model. Also, just to kind of look more broadly at the impacts beyond just the cost of equipment, but also some of the environmental and social benefits of the program. Then we develop financial plans and come back for policy decisions on services and rates from you. Key decisions that would have to be made, clearly rates. You've already heard some comments about voluntary versus mandatory service. That's a decision that would have to be made. We'll talk a little bit more about that. They have different strengths and weaknesses around those either direction. Frequency of compost pickup, would it be staggered with your recycle program every other week? Would it be a monthly or a less frequent service? Would it be seasonally? That would be a key decision to make. Container sizes, a single container, multiple containers. What would happen with trash containers, as the mayor pointed out? As we divert more away from trash containers, do we start offering smaller containers? In effect, a hybrid pay-as-you-throw type of program? Processing disposal options, those would be critical, and the cost of those options to a decision. We took the effort to at least do a preliminary prioritization of composting, along with the curbside recycle and curbside trash data, I think that you already have. We perceive that it would be about the same, that it would be in line with the same numbers that we had for recycle and trash. So it probably would not change that dramatically. You could possibly argue that we're hauling away that material right now anyway, so maybe a couple of those factors, the rating could be lower. But as an integrated program, it probably stays about the same. We reviewed, one of the best reports we reviewed is one that was in the packet, was this EPA composting summary. It was from one of the U.S. regions, but it was a national survey, so it had some pretty good data in it. And the data actually seemed to be consistent with some of the numbers that we were looking at, so we thought it was probably a pretty solid approach that researchers had taken. Average participation nationally in composting is about 35% to 40%. I believe that was by population. Average cost per household is $5.40. The average charge is $7.70, which would probably reflect private haulers providing a lot of that service. Our concept-level estimate right now, which is somewhere in the range of probably having to acquire four trucks, four and a half trucks, and, you know, five or six staff members, and then additional staff, drivers, and then paying disposal costs and all the other costs are at about $6. Now, that's an initial cost. Over time, as you divert waste away from trash, it could change that equation, but as long as you have three containers and they're picked up in a cycle similar to what we're doing now, it's going to be an additional cost. So the savings would come down the road or through more aggressive pay-as-you-throw types of programs. But this is what you're looking at probably to initiate a program, is in that range. Average organics collected is about 25 to 30 pounds per household per week. Seven to nine pounds of that is food waste. What that tells you is that composting is really a yard waste program predominantly. That's most of what's being hauled. It's most common to embed a small compost container in the trash program and then have an extra fee for larger containers, and that seems to be the most common approach, regionally, I should say. Organics disposal rates typically are lower than trash. In our case, they would actually be quite a bit higher, we think, at least in our preliminary Outdoor containers, a maximum of about 64 pounds would be reasonable for a container filled with food waste, which would be pretty rare. If it's filled with a combination of food waste and yard waste, that 96-gallon size most likely works. The yuck factor is big entering a program, particularly for those who are more skeptical. But the report is that the perception, in particular, of odors pretty well is a non-issue once a program is launched. That's usually one of the more common comments. We're not sure of that when it comes to multifamily containers. That data could be a little different, but I would, at least from my experience, believe that to be the case with certainly the household containers or poly carts that would be used. Composting capacity in the county, Western Disposal does operate a facility. The next closest facility is 34 miles away, and that would be through quite a bit of traffic. It probably would be cost prohibitive for us, but it's an option. Capacity at the Western Disposal site is available to Longmont. At least our preliminary discussions would indicate that. We have not negotiated or even, you know, entered into serious discussions on pricing, but we believe that it's probably in that $65 to $85 range. I would not think that it would be higher than that. It could very likely be lower than that. We pay $15.10 per ton right now for trash, so we're upside down on that parameter.
Well, it's kind of surprising because in other communities like San Francisco, it's the other, the equations was flipped.
Our estimated organic waste is about 10,000 tons per year. The potential that could be collected is in that 3,500 range. So when you consider all the contractors that generate waste and all the commercial facilities that generate waste, it's around 10,000. We could probably target somewhere around 3,000 with a residential program. Issues, mandatory versus voluntary, obviously pros and cons either way. The biggest issue you have is that scale-size issue with a voluntary program. You have to tool up, you have to buy at least a truck to do that, and then you've got to be able to know that you're going to have someone to pay for that truck. So if we collect money for that in advance, we need to know that we're going to, those folks are going to sign up for the service, willing to pay it in advance, two years probably before we even start the program. A year maybe, or we could borrow money and do it more immediately. We have not pursued that route before, borrowing money to equip ourselves, but that is an option. Mandatory obviously makes more sense. You can spread the cost across the entire community and have the least cost, you know, per household. But the obvious issue there is that you'll have residents who feel that you're imposing that service on.
Well, let's talk about mandatory. You know, mandatory with maybe a clause to opt out for, let's say, someone, I had an elderly gentleman who's been composting for 20 years. He's 80 years old, has fixed income, and he goes, "Why should I pay for composting if I'm already composting?" And he always, you know, and he has the smallest trash size, and he said he could even go smaller on that. But if someone like that is demonstrating that they're already composting, maybe, you know, one of the gates would be if you have something larger or smaller than the largest trash container, it's already demonstrating that you are composting and recycling, maybe someone like that on a fixed income, or maybe someone like that period should be able to potentially opt out, you know, as, but I kind of agree with the, because of the scale, this is either going to work or not going to work. You need to have a large population's got to opt in, or it's not going to work. So.
There's. Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you. I guess you have to really consider the interpretation of the term mandatory perhaps because no one makes anybody recycle either. And yet, we all have the opportunity to do it, and we've built that in, you know, the recycling fee comes in whether or not you fill your recycle bin, whether or not you put it in the trash. So, and we also build in the cost of maintaining the facility on Martin Street, where people from the outside can come in and dump paper and boxes and cardboard boxes and everything else. So, you know, even if you have a big recycle bin and, you know, you've just gotten a shipment of something, you've got extra boxes, well, we're already mandatorily building in excess capacity that everybody is paying for just for the occasional use, the luxury, if you will, of all of us who have sometimes a lot of boxes. You know, if you're moving or whatever, you've gotten a shipment of something, you have a lot of boxes. And we've already built in that as a mandatory fee for everybody, so you have to consider what really mandatory means. Because what we really should be doing at the Martin Street facility is checking everybody's ID and making people pay per throw there. Because otherwise, it's not, when you talk about the unfairness of mandatory, we've already built in a whole lot of up costs for everyone in the city. And that doesn't also count the fact that a lot of homeowners that are cutting their grass themselves, you know, don't have, they have to get a bigger trash bin to accommodate throwing that away if they're not mulching. But then there are a lot of people that have common areas that all that is hauled away for them, and, you know, they're not paying the, having to carry that capacity of trash hauling. So I think we need to look at what really mandatory means and what we already offer for some of these other additional services that everybody's paying for.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Mandatory means you're paying, you know, for some folks, you're paying for something you're not going to use. My question is, well, and before I get to my question, going back to Martin Street, we get, we pay EcoCycle for, we're in partnership with EcoCycle, I mean, we get money back on some of that material, don't we?
Yes.
Would there be a, what kind of cost recovery, recovery would we get if we did curbside composting?
Mayor and council, the cost would be in the range of $65 to $85 per ton, all things considered.
Okay, with that also, is, and Bob, you may not know this, but Eugene May, Eugene May, May, know this. Is there an ordinance that would, that disallows or would allow private haulers to provide curbside composting?
I think there's an issue.
So I'm trying to find ways that those that want to do curbside composting can do it, provided that we're not putting a mandate on those in the city that don't. Whether you recycle your cardboard or take it down to Martin Street, that's up to you. I tend to do that. And I've said this in prior meetings before, when you're getting into composting, you're getting into a little bit of an area that I know where a lot of residents are really jazzed about it and think it's a great thing, it's a feel-good thing. However, there are those residents that, you know, we just raise fees on certain other items in the city, so now we're going to tackle on another fee for those people that really want to do this, but there are those that do not. So if it's possible, there's no ordinance that doesn't allow private haul, that doesn't allow private haulers to, I guess, provide the service, why wouldn't we look at that route?
Mayor and council, we actually did explore that, in fact, at your direction a few years ago.
In '12.
And we, so we approached a number of haulers, including EcoCycle, to see if they would provide the service, just the composting service. provide the service, just the composting service in the city. And at that time, they all declined, so we weren't able...
The cost, probably?
I think it's the same issue we face. It's the scale size. If that's the only service you can provide and then you can't guarantee full participation, it's really hard to recover costs. You have to charge per participant so much that it becomes cost prohibitive. So it's hard to do a program like that. Even if we could guarantee participation at a rate per household, I don't know that the numbers would work out for a company to come in and do just composting without also doing the trash and recycle.
Right.
However, that's not analysis I have the ability to make for us if a hauler would have to.
My brother-in-law lives in Fort Collins. I'm trying to think, does he pay, I know he pays a private hauler because Fort Collins doesn't have their own service. So I think there's two different types of, and they compost at their house. With this, this is just really hard to swallow. One gentleman says you can keep this in your refrigerator. I don't have a very big refrigerator. I have a six and a nine-year-old, they require quite a bit. Again, I'm trying to find options for those folks that want to do this and do it how they would like to without putting a very large mandate on the city. Because if we do that, I don't think I can support it.
Mayor and council, let me offer one more perspective on that also, on the mandatory versus voluntary participation. Over time, as our diversion or our disposal rates increase, it in fact will be a mandatory rate for not composting. In other words, as landfill space is taken up and potentially, you know, as you see different regulations on how we can dispose of trash at a landfill, that cost will be embedded in our regular trash program. That's not the case today, and I don't mean to say that or indicate that, but that is the future. That is coming. So at some point, it will be more cost-effective even for those who prefer not to have a mandated service, to actually have a diversion program moving compost away from landfills.
Well, I also think we do this more, not only just because of costs, I mean, obviously from a cost point of view with the tipping fee of trash being less than the tipping fee for recycled, or, you know, your garbage, food waste and land scraps. But, you know, when I'm able to ride my bicycle on Peak Peak Highway in 65-degree weather in February and January, I mean, maybe it's just our stewardship of the nation and the world as a whole that we need to consider that aspect, the, just the, not the money, the financial aspect, but the being stewards to the planet is another social capital aspect that we also need to be considered in this whole equation too. So, you know, myself, I don't need curbside recycling because I've already recycled for years and composted and hauled stuff to the tree limb diversion and whatnot. So it's not a program for me, but there are other people that don't have the space, they don't have the knowledge, they don't have the wherewithal to do this. And I think it's good for the community, myself, but, and I agree with some of the statements that Gabe is making, that, you know, the cost is going to be hard for some people to swallow. So, and we don't really know the answers of the true costs yet because it's just preliminary. But anyway, Councilmember Waverly.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess my thought, I mean, I've got mixed emotions. First of all, my next-door neighbor out there, Mr. Pittman, we've lived next together for how long? Almost a month now, right? Almost a month. And the, and I was wondering what that stink was coming from your backyard.
[laughing]
Yeah. So, no, the, I think that, I think on one hand, I think that composting's a great idea. I think that, you know, I think it is good for our community. At the same time, however, I also think that it shouldn't be mandated, but if we make it as easy as possible, then people will do it and be encouraged to do it. And my family recycles because my little boys took the helm and there's a recycle bin, so we recycle because it's easy. My biggest concern is twofold. One, the comment that staff has stretched in finding the resources in order to figure out how to do this. That's number one. It's an obstacle, not insurmountable, but an obstacle. And number two is the fact that we've raised utility rates, water rates, the, I mean, this will be another increase in rates that, I mean, as much as you riding your bike in 65-degree weather in February makes you go, oh, my gosh, what's happening to the environment? I'm sure somebody who can't afford, you know, their heating bill when those same February days reach, you know, sub-zero weather, you know, they're wondering how they're going to pay their heating bill. So I guess what I would like to see is, we've got some council funds that I want to get rid of, right? But they're still there. Why don't we, you know, give some of those funds to the city manager to say, take the money out and hire somebody to do a study on composting and bring back three options. Option A is, if we don't do it now, when would we do it? Build it into the capital plan. Two, if we do do it, what would it look like if we used a private partner like Western? And C, how would we do it if we did a complete rollout? Meaning if we just went for it, what would it cost and what would the impact be? And then D, last but not least, what if we started some type of hybrid program where we said, let's focus on, you know, you know, let's start, like our broadband, start in one area of the town and work it out from there. And that way, we don't need a big truck. Maybe we just need a pickup truck and Steve Pittman, you know? He told me yesterday that he would be willing to do this. No, just kidding, he did not. So I guess that's what I'd propose we do. You know, get the funding from council contingency and then ask city council to bring back, or city staff to bring back those four options. And once we have the data, then we can decide. That's what I'd like to see. I'm not making a motion, this is a study session, but I'll let you rip the rest of your way in. What? I'd move that we do that then. That way, there's no buts, Harold. We're boss. You do it. No, just kidding.
Well, I was going to tell you, as much as we would appreciate the council contingency funds, I think what we were saying is we do have the room for the study within the revenue sources. So we don't need the council contingency funds.
And I also don't want to make us or our program an obstacle to what you want to do. We can figure out a way to do it, but I did want to at least inform you as to what our limitations are programmatically.
Yeah. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So I, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do collect compost at the Waste Diversion Center. Is that correct?
Mayor and council, that is correct. We do.
And do you have any idea of how much we actually collect there?
Charlie? We're collecting about 30 tons a year at this point. It's steadily increasing every year.
30 tons? Okay. So in a way, we have started a composting collection system, is that, and so I get, and where do we take that material?
Mayor Coombs and council, that material is collected by a private contractor and it's hauled, I'm not sure if it's hauled to Western or another location, but it's picked up by a private contractor.
And that adds to our overall cost of the Waste Diversion Center? Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you have no idea what that is?
I'm not off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. So what I, I am glad to see that Waste Diversion Center there. I mean, I do see a lot of grass that is going into the regrind pile. And so for the food strap side of this, this would really make a big impact on landfill. But with the number of people, the number of trips I see and the amount of time I spend in line waiting to get in to dump my stuff, it seems like that's been a very successful program. Is there another way to potentially put that type of facility in two places in town so we don't have to have people driving all over? I guess that would be another suggestion to think about is to place a collections zone at maybe the public works facility at the airport, and we have one on Martin Street, so both ends of town covered. So we can start to encourage collection of compost. Even if we, in the interim, there'll be people that will want to probably just do that anyway rather than have an extra container in their garage. So just a suggestion. Well, we do have a motion that's been seconded. Should we vote on that motion first before we? Okay. Councilmember Christensen?
Okay, the, when you're talking about the compost, well, actually, this is what I was going to ask, but I'd like to clarify something. When you're talking about collecting compost over at the diversion center, do you mean the yard waste? Or is there a separate compost that I'm not aware of?
Mayor Coombs and council, there's a separate collection bin at the Waste Diversion Center for residents only, which they can show their ID.
Oh, okay.
And they get in, they can put their food wastes in there. So separate from the leaves and branches and so forth.
I didn't know that. Okay. Another point I wanted to clarify is on this, on the slides that you were talking about, what about the commercial recycling and trash? You listed just what percentage was single-family homes, multifamily homes, and then other things. What about the commercial aspect? Because it seems to me, I realize you wouldn't get much composting from like your average business, but for restaurants and supermarkets and many other places like that, you could get a huge amount. I know there are a lot of challenges, as they detailed in these reports, about restaurants. But when you train them and have, help them set something up, that could be huge if we had involved commercial enterprises in composting.
Mayor and council, we, as you know, don't supply services to commercial entities. They're exempt from municipal services. So they could participate and we could offer services that they may decide to participate in, but that does take the program in a very different direction.
Yeah. So they've, have they always been exempt from commercials, from city services?
I couldn't answer the question for how long, but as far as I know, they've been exempt in Colorado for many years, if not forever.
It would just seem like it would be so much more economical for them.
We can collect from single families and multifamilies up to eight.
Right. And multifamily seems to me like an enormous thing for apartment buildings where you get enormous amounts of waste. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
If, let me proceed here. We'll come back on some of these topics again and from a little different angle too, so it may stimulate some different questions.
One question you would like to address right now?
You have to turn your mic off. Okay.
Yes. First of all, I, people have been whispering that we do have a motion on the floor. I would like to speak directly to the motion to take some council contingency funds and have a study done. I think what the city manager's input was that there is capacity to do a study. However, I also would like to have it looked at, those best practices that were called out in the report, such as instead of going immediately to a curbside composting, it seems like the first baby step is doing the yard waste and the education program. And that might really meet the needs of some of what council members have expressed as reservations of the program. To, so to jump right full into curbside composting as the focus of what we want staff to do, I think we need to look at what was in those reports you presented us to look at and see what are the first preliminary steps. And it seems like education, having a first-step yard waste diversion program builds for curbside composting. And I would also like to look at a timeline of, if you have any knowledge around what the landfill lifetimes are in this area and what costs are to haul. And, I mean, I guess the other thing we didn't really talk about, which I imagine you'll put into the numbers on return on investment, is not only the cost of buying the trucks, but the wear and tear, having an additional truck come down an alley or a street. And again, you know, there's increased costs in gasoline and that sort of thing. But I'd also encourage staff to look at some very effective programs that I'm aware of. I, past years, spent quite a bit of time in Canada in the summer, and our friends in Kingston, Ontario that we would visit, they had curbside composting as part of their municipal service. And their town about, they think they're larger than Longmont, maybe around 110,000, 120,000, but they ran a very, very efficient program. And I know the city of Toronto had an excellent program, not without controversy because the private hauler that was hauling all the compost started dumping it in a landfill, which was a big controversy. So we'd want to not use the example of Toronto, but they, they had the capacity to figure out how to educate people and divide everything up without a lot of contamination. So I think it can be done. I mean, I'll say this, I think, you know, we're just as smart as Canadians, maybe we're smarter, and they play hockey better, but, you know, I think we have the capacity to do it. But just like our recycling programs become so effective because of the education part, I think we haven't really talked about, talked about trucks and everything else, but I think that in order to really get this moving, I want to not spend council contingency funds jumping into this full-blown study, but seeing, you know, what the phased approach could be.
Well, I don't either, but I also think we should give Bob an opportunity to finish the rest before we ask a lot of additional questions because he might answer them already. But we do have a motion that's been seconded. I'm not going to support it, but anyway, I think we should vote on that motion to put it to bed, so let's vote. Okay, looks like the motion fails with Councilmember Bagley and Santos voting for and the rest of us voting against. So, okay, go ahead and continue. Councilmember Bagley?
And as much as, I mean, I guess as I look through the rest of the thing, and you can finish, but essentially, the root of the motion was get an expert and tell us what the cheapest, best way is to accomplish it. You know, so that's really what I'm saying, and we can spend time talking about it, but if members in the community want it, and I don't know why people, I mean, I don't understand why we voted against the motion, because...
We just voted against standing council contingency.
Okay, no, I'm just saying, I guess what I'm saying is I think everybody here wants to move forward and figure out what to do.
That's right.
And we could spend more time talking about it, or we could just say, get on with it, and let's, let's, let's let government do its work. But if we want to keep going and talking about it, that's fine.
Let's, let's finish the presentation and...
I'm going to move really fast now. So, and it's going to come up a number of times, but the phased approach and compost life and all of that, the biggest problem we face is once again, the scale size. If we start with programs that are more limited in nature, you still have to tool up to do those, but you can't recover your costs fully from the whole community. So those do become more challenging for us. It's different for a private hauler than for a municipal program of our size. So we have considered different ways we could engage programs over the years, and it's just been difficult to come up with some option that really makes it work financially. Rates are the, obviously, the biggest issue that you'll face. We've talked a lot about container size. Clearly, that's, you know, a discussion, maybe something that we would have to in the long-term study, maybe not in the short term to initiate a program. Changes in overall trash habits or something, we would have to consider. Limited options for processing organics. The multifamily equation is a little bit complicated. It's a little harder in large dumpsters, dumpsters to dump compost material compared to these smaller polycarts, but it's doable. Let me go back. We've discussed, you know, the possibility we could discontinue other services if we decided to go into composting and use those funds in that program. So spring tree limb, the fall leaf disposal, the compost bin at the Waste Diversion Center, those could be eliminated, and all those resources could be put into a composting program. That's not a lot of money, but it's a little bit. Nuisances, yeah, frequency pickup, I think we've covered all of those. Pros and cons are going to mirror those somewhat. Obviously, if we do a curbside program, you leverage the experience you have right now in the city. Really good experience for doing a very efficient, reliable curbside program, so it would be adding to that. Improving yard waste options for residents, I think that would be the most popular component of a compost program, would be the yard waste. Preparing for future disposal challenges. We do not have that crystal ball. We don't know when costs will start going up, and there'll be more pressure for diverting compostable materials from the landfill, but it is coming, and it will be here someday, and we'll have to address that, or we'll pay for it. You'll see those rates flip the other way, where the trash rates will be much higher than organic disposal waste. Modernizing the service, this is a step in that direction. I think our services are currently modern. I think we do a good job with that. This would be a movement in that direction if there was a future program to compost. Some of the cons, the obvious one, are increased rates. The customer perceptions, depending on how the program is structured, obviously, would weigh out there. Concerns about nuisances, you'll always have those, additional containers, odors, pests. More trucks in the neighborhood initially. Councilmember Levinson mentioned that, and that is, to start a program, you would have more trucks out there. I think you look at these programs more in the long term, though. I think that the diversion scenarios probably lead to fairly sustainable programs, but it does take a while to get there. You're not going to be there in year one. Changing through existing routes and habits would be necessary. I think that's a small impact, but it's one we would have to consider if we launched a new program. And this was my last slide, because we're also concerned about rate fatigue in the community. We've done a lot in other areas, and the last time we brought composting, we had a very bad economy, and we had to raise the sanitation rates just for the regular services. And it was, I think, a tough pill to swallow to actually add the cost for composting at that time. And a number of you were on council at that time, remember those discussions, and I think you were conflicted back then. And a little bit of that conflict still hangs out there today, because we've, as we've pointed out, the city is rich in assets that are now needing to be renewed from those growth periods, you know, 30, 20, 30, and 40 years ago. And a lot of those were, a lot of those assets were built in the city by developers and passed on directly to homeowners that bought the homes. Now, it's being passed on to all the ratepayers to renew that system, and so we're in a little different climate, and we recognize that. So, that's always a challenge that's out there, and we're low still with this overall total bill, but it has gone up recently, so. And that was the end of my slide presentation. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And none of the residents that have contacted me think we have low rates for anything. As a matter of fact, they're not happy with us at all, and I get that a lot. Curbside recycling would be great, but we need more data. And Harold indicated we have money for a study, so I would move that we have this, we commission this study, so that we have options and have data, so we can make an intelligent decision.
All right. Got a motion to move?
Mayor, Council, I could also ask a question about timeline, because we obviously have to work this in with our other projects that we're moving on, so I wanted to get a sense from Council in terms of the timeline you'd be looking at.
Well, I don't think it's something that necessarily has to be done in three months, but, you know, I know you have a lot on your plate, so I don't, six months? Mayor and Council, I think if we were focused, if we had, we would have to write an RFP, and it would probably take us a couple of months to, you know, draft that out, and then a selection phase and a study phase. If we were focused, we might look at at least a preliminary study by the end of the year. Okay. Maybe early in 2016. Councilmember Levinson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. One of the other best practices that was highlighted in the reports that we were presented with was to engage residents that are interested in the issue to help do some of this work. So, is there a way that with the RFP process, that, you know, we could get one of the citizens that's interested to be on the RFP panel to help, you know, choose the contractor and also, you know, focus in, or maybe we can use some of those folks to help do some of the work? And, you know, do something a little creative. But that was highlighted several times as a best practice, to let other people do the work for you as much as you can, because that's gonna be your basis of your education project, a part of it.
Mayor and Council, I think that, that's a tough question for me. There are a lot of ways to get resident input, and absolutely, you would have to have that in this type of a program. But I think managing the study and writing, drafting an RFP is something that, you know, would mostly be within the purview of staff, but with, I think, the appropriate input, I think we're good at collecting that in this community. We've worked with other departments outside of Public Works and Natural Resources to get support in that area, and I think we would tap those same resources to have a pretty enriched study with community involvement.
I think part of it is to have the community involvement in the process. I think in terms of where that really fits in in the process, that's what we're gonna have to evaluate in terms of how we look at the selection committee, but that definitely has to be part of what we do as we continue to move forward. I also wanted to provide a bit of a perspective on this, so I've also worked in communities that have had private haulers, residential collection, and in communities, two communities where it was the city providing the service, and one community where it was a private hauler. The one thing that I think is important to understand in this conversation when we talk about cost and what it really looks like, is that when you have folks that are really good at efficiency and leaning up your process, what that means is you also have really narrowed the capacity that you have. So, for some organizations, it's easy to absorb other pieces of it, because there's actually excess capacity that exists in the system. And part of what Bob has been saying in this is that we really don't have that, because the way they operate the collection system today is it's very lean and very efficient. And so, that's bringing a different perspective in. And when you have private haulers, they have capacity at a regional and a national level where they can bring products in and actually drop the cost as you compare it to municipal provider. So, those are some of the differences that we have to figure out in this study as we continue moving forward.
Okay. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Like staff during the RFP, of course, public input is key. It's just that we don't want anything to be swayed one way or the other regarding this The one thing that I hope is that we try to find some balance for those people that want to do this, and those that aren't sure, may do it, and then you have those others that aren't gonna do it. There's gotta be a nice, fine balance, and I think that's what we're trying to do. We may have to engage some of those national haulers to see if, you know, I don't know, if they're willing to create something just for Longmont, or, you know, we could be creative. I've heard other cities do other things, but kind of like with everything else, we're Longmont, and I mean that, and I stress that, we are Longmont. We try to do things and take pieces of ideas from other communities. And right now, a lot of people want to be like us when it comes to broadband and things of that nature. So, if we can find some sort of hybrid that works, it might work for everyone.
And just on the bid process that I did want to clarify for Council, when they go into the bid process, you have the bid team, and the bid team goes into the blackout period. So, in most of those cases, as they're moving through it, I'm not even privy to that information based on our purchasing rules. And so, there is a very high process that we utilize to make sure that it is fair and competitive, and so that's also part of the process that I wanted folks to understand.
Well, one thing, you know, we had a survey done in 2012 that said if the cost increased by $2.50 to $5., 60% of the residents wanted this. You know, now we're saying it might be $6., so I don't know if that would change the survey that much, perhaps, but, you know, my job as a politician isn't to do what I want, but if 60% of the residents want something, I think we need to make it happen. And, you know, however, that, I mean, that's what our job is, to represent the constituents of this community, and to the hardest part, is sometimes figure out what do they, but so far, there's been more people down here saying they want this and are promoting it than saying that they don't want it at this point. But I think we just need to get the, yeah, but I think that we just need to find out what it's really gonna cost and how we're gonna do it, and to do the next steps. Councilmember Christensen?
Yes, I also would like to be supportive of what you said. It's not in terms of mandatory versus voluntary. Over time, in the next 10, 15 years, this is not a matter of when or if we do it, but when, because we will be running out of another landfill. We need to delay that as long as possible. We need to cut down on the amount of stuff we waste in the first place. Everybody knows that, but of course, we're all sloppy and lazy, and we keep throwing things away. But I would also like to support what Councilman Santos said. We do have wonderful resources in these two reports in here of various other, what other places have tried, and we can customize what we're trying to do to Longmont, to what the situation is, to our peculiarities of the neighborhood, and to the fact that Mr. Caminitis and I frequently go over to the consortium of regional cities where they're talking about composting. And so, this is being addressed, but we do have a unique situation, because we do our own pickup, and so that has its own advantages, and in this case, it makes it a little bit more difficult, because we aren't able to get a, we can't just get somebody in here to haul it for us privately. We have to do it ourselves, and so it will be customized to Longmont. And I know that we'll figure out something really wonderful for that, because every, we do want this, and we do need it. But there are various situations from Denver's experimental program to Longmont's every other week or seasonal pickup. There are all sorts of possibilities, so I know we'll figure out something. Thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Sandy, what was the percentage in the 2012 survey of respondents? Okay. The reason with that is that you have a sample, good sample of residents, that doesn't necessarily mean it's all 90,000, you know, 88, 90,000 residents of the city of Longmont. And if we're using surveys, we should use surveys as a guide, but not as a, this is what we should be doing.
Absolutely.
And then also, if anyone that come up to ask for anything at city council, they're motivated to come here, and I'm happy to see those residents here, because they're motivated to get this done. But until this gets a little bit more of a community perspective, to say that those people that are, maybe aren't for curbside composting, aren't here, doesn't necessarily give credence to 100% of the residents say we should do curbside composting here.
I agree.
So, I'm just waiting on Sandy with that. Because we always get motivated residents, and there's a topic, whether it's this, or backyard chickens, or anything else, there's always a, there's always some residents out there that want, they make an effort.
But sometimes you have to make a decision based on all the information you have.
Agreed.
I mean, sometimes you make bad decisions, because you don't have enough information, but sometimes you have...
Agreed, Mayor. But just to say that if you get the majority of the people coming...
As I'm saying, is if we did like go out and did a more valid poll, and they still were supportive of this, I would have to, as a politician, my obligation is to support...
That's why I say I'm never a politician.
Go ahead, Sandy.
The winds of change are often...
Assistant City Manager. In the 2012 survey, we had 3,000 randomly selected households that were surveyed. 842 completed surveys, so a response rate of 29%.
29%.
29% was the response rate, but this is a statistically valid survey, so they go back and forth, and essentially, it's a...
3,000 went out, 800 came back, roughly. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Mayor? Thank you, Mayor. I guess if we can, if we pass this motion, which I will support, this is kind of like the evolution we've seen in the recycling business over the years. I remember the little green and blue bushel basket size, and now I've got 48, or 96-gallon recycling bin, and it's full every week. So, it's an evolution, and you have to take the first step. This is the first step, in my opinion, so I will be supporting the motion. Okay, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Let's vote. That passes 7 to 0. Thank you, Bob. Why don't we take a final break? so we can get out here okay so we're gonna do a flood recovery I think
correct mayor Coombs and members of council I'm Dale Radamaker general manager over at Public Works and Natural Resources what we prepared for you tonight is a is an update we're about 18 months now from our flood in December of 2013 wanted to give you an update on on primarily on the recovery projects that have been underway and those that are about to start and also to give you a brief update on the St. Brain River project but the major update for that's going to be coming up in March so I'm not going to spend too much time on that tonight so you know flood recovery you see our flood recovery signs in different areas around the city suffice it to say it's continuing you'll recall a year ago or so we were very concerned this time last year with spring runoff and we had multiple meetings around the community dealing with that you know the snowpack this year is not what it was in in this time of 2014 but I'll always tell you that it doesn't matter that much especially not in February we'll see what happens through the rest of the year but again we're we're continuing to watch that it is actually running very close to average or normal for this time of year so I'm going to start at the upper end of the system at the top of the river and then work our way down downstream as they say so there's that photograph of Ralph Price that's pretty well ingrained in our minds looking at all the trees that got scoured out of the canyon so the good news is we've made a huge amount of headway up there removing not only the you know the woody debris in the inlet but also the woody debris that got carried around the reservoir to the point that we now believe we can bring the reservoir up to full status and so we are beginning to we'll be underway filling the reservoir and we intend to bring it up to its full level we there will be some level continuing debris removal as you can expect they're not going to get every log and every tree out of there on your first time around and so I imagine over the next couple of years we're going to continue to have some albeit not at the level that we're doing now but some ongoing debris removal occurring at the reservoir so again Longmont Dam the biggest thing here is we've updated the number to the amount of the debris that we actually granular debris that we took out of the reservoir I think we started at about 20 some thousand then moved it to 50,000 now we're at 70 some thousand so it's still removed and the reservoir is back online it came back online early in 2014 so the spillway repairs to the road most of you have probably seen this you know the picture up in the top right hand corner is the the road as it existed immediately after the flood and then you can see the gabion walls that we built I think one of the biggest projects that's going to yet happen up there is now going to be the the construction of a bridge going across what used to be the small spillway channel and and that bridge project is going to be just getting under design we are also working on the permanent road repairs up there right now as we speak and so this is a picture of the of the culvert at the sleepy lion trail mayor Protan Bagley will remember that in a different form but we are building it you can see we're building it back in a far more resilient way we're putting head walls on it and those kinds of things that will hold it in place a little better we hope and then you go a little further upstream at chimney rock we're putting in the concrete box culverts at that point that will be similar to the concrete box culvert that was immediately below Longmont Dam you know and those survived they got they got eroded around but concrete tends to hold and stay and so we're we're going to a much higher level this is one of the hazard mitigation projects that we're doing through FEMA where they're allowing us to put back actually a higher level than what existed pre-flood we've also worked on that pipe ass diversion pipeline above Longmont reservoir and rebuilding that diversion structure and again it'll be in far better condition again than what it was pre-flood so up at the reserve the most of the calls and the questions we're getting are when can we go there again when can we revisit and this is just a few of the slides and the most important one is up on the top left hand that the area is still closed but that you know things like the restrooms and the fishing care those are all things that are under design right now and so we're designing those recreation facilities we are working towards an opening in June of 2015 so you heard it here and we hope we're going to stay with that I know Kim and her staff are sort of heading up some of the recreational amenities if we have to we may open it with sandalts with porta potties if we don't have every little restroom up there I I don't know that that's the reason not to open it the only reason we won't open it is if we don't believe it's safe if we believe there's still too much construction going on where you really don't want people and their dogs and children walking through a construction site and so assuming the winter holds and we get decent weather where we can finish some of those major culverts that I just showed you I I think we're going to be in a position to open the way we'll since we're going to be filling Ralph Price we thought what the heck we will issue out permits again to to fish you know one of the things we may want to consider again to welcome people back is is maybe this year we issue permits but we don't charge a lot for them so that people can get a sense of coming back to it without getting charged more money by the city so we'll think about that it would take your direction if you've got thoughts on that as well yes yeah so the question from councilmember Santos would would it be a small number yeah we still about 600 permits is what we issue frankly if you issue more than that I'm not sure we have the capacity to handle too many and frankly that's about the number that sell every year anyway if you lower the price you may sell more though so we'd want to keep a balance there though these are shots from the work that's getting underway to repair the South St. Brain Pipeline again this diversion was was undermined and essentially taken out as was the pipeline itself this was a project that we actually bid back in the beginning of 2014 and we got zero bidders and we got zero contractors bidding on the project the contractors were just overwhelmed at that time and so we sat back and rebid it late last year early this year we got good bids got a contractor and we're underway the the reality of what we dealt with though by delaying the years we got to go through a much more extensive permitting process which which was not so fun but I will say thank you to our county partners that the commissioners worked with us very well to get that permit issued out any number of permits again that project's underway we hope to have it completed by April and May to beat the speed the spring runoff and and to again bring this water supply back to the city once we're done with this one we will be back to 100% of water delivery options to the city so our Heron Lake Channel this is you know this is looking at Airport Road and the flooding that that came down into those neighborhoods of the green champion greens in the valley and so the Heron Lake Channel has been designed to prevent that in the future and it's essentially a channel coming from the Pelopons Heron Lake area south to the St. Brain Creek and that's about quarter to a half mile west of Airport Road and so I think the last time I talked with council about that we knew that we had permitting issues with the pre-able jumping mouse but that we were able through consultation with US Fish and Wildlife Service to get through that process and and subsequent to that we also got our our permit from the county for the limited use permit only to find out now that we have eagles and so we have another species and so this is well I don't know that they eat mice they they do eat they eat fish and they I think they do eat prairie dogs but so we have another challenge so we have the eagle issue there what it's going to cause us to have to do is to probably break this project into two phases because the closure period for the mouse doesn't line up with the closure period for nesting eagles and so we're going to complete the lower end of the project again we're in consultation with US Fish and Wildlife Service and with the Colorado Parks and Wildlife Service and with Boulder County and the property owner to figure that out but we're going to probably have to do the project in two steps we're going to do the lower end to get out of the mouse area this spring and then we may have to hold until the eagles fledge and fly assuming that they that they're successful and that they have eggs and their little ones hatch and fly and that kind of stuff all that us parents are hoping to happen as well albeit not in the first year anyhow assuming that happens we would then finish the project in the fall which again is outside of the sensitive time for the eagles so this project is I think this is one that should be award winning for dealing with multiple endangered species in threatened areas but one thing one step that we have taken is it's it's called an eagle take permit and that's again in consultation with US Fish and Wildlife and you need that even if you don't think you're necessarily going to disturb the eagles because the setback distance is a half a mile a half a mile takes you all the way down to the St. Brain and so what we're asking for is that take permit in the event that our work does disturb them but we're taking I I believe somewhat extraordinary steps to avoid that we're bringing in the big tall hay bales to sort of screen us if you've got other ideas
council member Gregor just as an aside just as an aside asterisk half mile setback for eagles versus fracking just just saying
it's an idea there yeah so so the project is moving forward we're working with our contractors and our purchasing folks to sort of figure out a way to get this thing done
is this project related to taking down the Jersey barriers on Airport Road so once this is done can we take down those barriers
so mayor Coombs it is related to that and actually today I got a call from one of the area farmers who can't get into their fields and and worked with us all of last year to drive like two or three miles out of the way with their sloth herd and with their equipment to get into the field they have asked us to remove two or three of those barriers so that they can get in and I'm leaning towards thinking that should be the right thing that we do because again if it's a couple of barriers we can redeploy those if we need I don't think we should take down the entire barrier system though until we have certainty that we're moving dirt out there and we're getting this project built that's my personal thinking on that and that's what most of the residents out there tell me is please don't take that barrier down until you've got something built to protect us if you want us to take it down sooner we'll follow your direction but my advice would be to leave it there I'm not we're not getting complaints from the neighborhood on the barrier being out there and so and that's also part of the case we're making with the Fish and Wildlife Service is that I consider this still to be an emergency situation we still have emergency measures in place to prevent flooding through those neighborhoods and I and I think until we can get this project done and those barriers down we're still in that situation
well you have the same problem with the railroad there I mean you have to put three or four
we have to close it
close it up too so I imagine if you opened up two or three you know
I think we can manage that on the on the number of hours to deploy and we'll have at least that much time before there's a flood event so stay with us on that we'll see what the next species of concern is but hopefully we've we're not going to have many more next one I wanted to show you some of the you know the repairs to the irrigation systems you know councilor you'll recall that that was one of the bigger issues facing the same brain was the demolition and destruction of all the irrigation structures and so these are two that the city staff took the lead on the oligarchy ditch and the rough and ready and both of those diversions have been rebuilt and are diverting water and and we also worked very closely to advocate for FEMA reimbursement of these irrigation diversions on behalf of the the farmers and the private owners of those and were successful in getting that accomplished as well and so it wasn't such a huge financial burden on the farmers so our parks building you know bottom picture we're underwater we're reopened I think it's working pretty well if do we have the heat working in the conference room yet we still have a few quirky issues that but we are back in our in our facility and I think it's a good thing and so preparing going forward our our main project coming up is that St. Brain Improvement Project again that's the improvement to the St. Brain Channel from roughly Martin Street up to Airport Road and we are we have probably the largest engineering consulting team and team of biologists and team of land planners working on that that I've probably ever seen Kim and Nick and Brad Skoll are leading that effort and I think they're doing a an awesome job I was in a meeting this morning with a variety of I was in a meeting this morning with a variety of folks looking at the sandstone reach. But it's a project that is going to really transform through the center of the city. This essentially shows the, you know, the two reaches. When you, when you get up above the Golden Pond area on the far left side, on the upper end of the project, what we're going to look at there is working again with those property owners up there and to plan for the future. Because some of that area is intended to be urbanized and is part of the Longmont planning area. We will build what we need to to make sure that we can find the river as it comes through Longmont and plan for those extensions as it goes through the west all the way up to Airport Road. So the Improvement Project out on, I think both on portions of it going through the city, but most importantly out on the sandstone reach, we are looking at all natural channel design approaches. And essentially what that means is we're not going to be bringing a bunch of riprap and concrete and those kinds of man-made structures, if you will, into that area any more than we absolutely need to. I think our commitment is to protect the environment out there and to sort of respect that going forward. So the sandstone reach itself, what's shown here on this slide, the areas that are shaded, that's city-owned property. And so you can see that the city owns the majority of the land from the confluence with Boulder Creek down near Highway 119 all the way up to County Line Road. We own the Pichel property jointly with the county. And the county was in the meeting with us today as well. So what we're looking at in this particular reach is how to get this project done. Coming up, I think we're going to be going into final design this year. As soon as we get the preliminary design done on the entire reach. And some of the key elements that we're looking to reestablish is to get a trail back out to Sandstone Ranch. We think that's obviously an important thing for the community. We're also studying hard the balance of putting the water back into the old channel in different reaches of it versus letting it go where it wants to go in its new channel. And I think also we're going to be working with Aggregate Industries, which are, still have an ongoing mining operation out in that area. And we need to be partnering with them as well to make sure that whatever we do is in alignment with the overall integrated plan out in that, in that particular area. This is part of the pilot program that, that we also got approved through FEMA. And I know Kim and Nick had a bad effort up. And so we were able to secure a $29 million pilot. I always get it wrong, Pilot Alternative. Alternative Procedures Program. Thank you, Kim. So it's a fairly new FEMA program. What we've been told is this is one of the largest ones in the country that they've approved. And so of course, the spotlight's going to be on us to make sure that not only from our perspective, but from FEMA's perspective, that it's successful. And just in a nutshell, what that essentially means is that it gives us the flexibility as the city to do the work that we believe needs to be done in this particular reach and then take whatever funds are in excess of that and apply it to other reaches of the river. And so our strategy all along has been to complete this work out here, which we believe to be in the nine to 10 million dollar range, and take that balance, 20 million or so, and apply it to the portions of the river from Martin Street up to Airport Road. So the St. Brain Project, again, it's in, it's in preliminary design now. I believe we're still on schedule to have that done by May. There is a NEPA environmental permitting process underway. There will be a full environmental assessment done. The public input on the preliminary design alternatives is also underway. We plan to go to final design on the sandstone reach that I was just showing you, as well as the lower reaches of the city project from Martin Street up to the railroad, up to the Burlington Northern Railroad, and initiate that final design in June of this year as well, with the goal of getting under construction either late 2015, early 2016, and actually moving dirt. That lower end project will also be done in concert with the Dickens Park Project. And so that area from Martin through Main, including the bridge and that whole, whole nine yards through there is going to see a lot of construction getting underway this year. Overall construction, we say five to seven here. I think that's very aggressive, but we're still saying that. So I guess when we get to year eight, we'll say it must have been a little longer. But I, I hope to get it done that quick. To do that, it may take us building on several reaches of the river at the same time and those kinds of things. A lot of this is actually dictated as well by the funding that we're going after, especially the federal funding, whether it be the CDBG funding or the Corps of Engineer funding. They have timelines that they, that they want to see the money spent in. One of our challenges, among many, has been that the increased flood flows. You'll recall prior to the flood, the FEMA regulatory flood flows were about 10,000 CRFS coming through the city. At one point, six months to a year ago, we thought that number was maybe around 13,500, which is what the study showed coming out of the canyons at Lyons. And we thought, well, we'll be conservative. We'll take that 13,500 and move it all the way through the city. The latest work now, the CWCB and CDOT are now working on the plains reaches of the rivers. In other words, from Highway 36 all the way out to the plat. And the numbers now are about 15,400. So that's, you know, do the math. That's at least a 50% increase in the flood flows. That is putting pressure on the project scope and budget. Whenever you increase the amount of water that you want to carry by 50%, whether it be a pipeline or a channel, it takes additional resources to do that. I don't think it's at a point now where it's significantly impacted it, but it's something we really got to keep our eye on. And we're going to give you a much more detailed report on that particular project when we come up with the blueprint Longmont Study on March 24th. And so stay tuned for that. That's when we're going to have much more detail. So Bridge Projects, our infamous Sunset Street Bridge. Harold and I were talking about that earlier today. And his first question is, when are we going to get that built? And I said, well, when do you want it built? No, I think. So that project's in design and we can't get it built soon enough, is the answer. It is, it is a corridor that we're looking at as well though. So we're looking at from the railroad down to Boston to make sure that we build a bridge that fits with the future road that we think we're going to need through there. So we believe, let me first talk about Main Street, which is actually the bottom picture there. So Main Street is under design, going to be going into construction in August. We think that's not quite a, you know, six to nine month kind of project. Again, depending on the weather in the winter. Sunset, Sunset Bridge is also under design, should go to construction in August of this year. And maybe getting the Main Street project done if that's any solace. But the point is, it's moving as quickly as we can get it through the process. There is substantial permitting that comes with it. Again, because we have federal funding coming from the Federal Highway Authority. And they have very strict processes that you need to go through in order to be eligible for that funding.
When you say you're under design, does that mean like 50% of your drawings are done? Or what exactly is under design?
We'll let Nick answer that question.
Mayor Combs, I would say we're on Sunset Street. We're at about probably 30% design right now. We've identified right-of-way requirements that we're going to need and have met with adjacent property owners about that. We've got the bridge set. Basically, the structures, once again, both the Main Street Bridge and the Sunset Street Bridge were impacted by changes in the design criteria with these design flows that came through. We were probably at 50% design flows on the Main Street Bridge when we got notified it was going to go from 10,000 to 13,000. The next time I came into that design meeting and said we're talking 15,000, the looks on the faces were, but, but we're farther along. But we're probably at about 30% design on Sunset Street. We're farther than that on Main Street. We're probably closer to 60% on Main.
Alright, thank you.
Pratt Street Bridge will then go to construction, design and construction starting in 2016. And again, we're staging those bridges so that we don't have every bridge out of commission over the St. Brain at the same time. So Greenway, questions? We get lots of questions on those. I think you probably noticed that we just opened up another stretch of it on the lower end from 119th Street and that, that trail parking lot all the way out to the confluence with Dry Creek. And so this map shows those areas that are, that are open and those areas that are going to be under construction and when we believe those will be going to construction. That being said, I think we're also looking at ways to reopen areas as soon as we can. Part of the challenge on the, on the trail has always been, can you build the trail before you build the channel? And avoid having to rebuild the trail yet again. And so we're trying to be sort of fiscally responsible by not overbuilding something only to destroy it when we come in with the channel. But again, we are trying to find ways to get as much of it rebuilt even ahead of the channel coming in. If we can build it off to the side far enough so that the channel can be built without the trail being destroyed. I think one of the biggest challenge areas is in that from Sunset going west into Rogers Grove. And I think we're even looking at options there. But it's hard to predict right now until we get further along on the channel design where we can actually put the trail to be out of the way. So Left Hand Creek, here's a picture after the flood. And then recently, we have completed all the repairs to Left Hand Creek. And the FEMA floodplain has been finalized, removing those homes in the Southmore Park area out of the floodplain or by saving those homeowners, the flood insurance costs that they've had over the years. I think that picture in the bottom right is of the mayor's bike race. Not bike race, bike ride. If it was a race, there wouldn't be much challenge. But maybe we should have a race. So then we've got the Canamoto Park Project. So the bottom right-hand picture there is of the new pump station that we built. And again, you can see the channel having rebuilt where the pool used to be. And so this is a sort of a schematic of where the new pool will be going. You'll notice that it's just off of the parking lot. It is essentially being built right now where the playground is, which means the playground has to move to the west. And I think Harold, you've been working with the school district on that.
Yeah, I think Mayor Council, one of the things that I want to talk about, and I'm going to back up a little bit to Heron Lake, is just the level of cooperation that's existed between all the governmental entities as we've moved forward. So when we talk about Heron Lake, that's obviously a joint project with the county and also private property owners in the area. And, and I will say that in some ways, our relationship with the county is, in terms of all of the projects we're working on, we're spending as much time with them as we actually do internally in terms of how we move through this and the conversations. I think last week I spent two or three days with county representatives as we were working through all of, all of these issues. On this one, I really have to thank the school district in terms of the work that they did on this. What we found on this project was that the property line, if you look at those green trees just to the, I guess that would be north of the sidewalk, our property line was somewhere in that area. And we were actually maintaining beyond that. So when we went in and had to actually move the swimming pool and move the park, we were, we were moving on school property. And, and we knew that we were also under some time constraints. And so I want to thank the school district and Don in terms of their support on this because we actually moved through it very quickly. And we're in the process of exchanging the property that we need to to really match where we were maintaining. But at the same time, they gave us a right of access so we can go ahead and immediately, so we can go ahead and start construction and we don't delay the project. And so overall, the one thing that I want to just, I'm going to say and say and say is the level of cooperation right now amongst all the governmental entities is, is, as I hear from them, at a level that we've probably never seen in terms of moving through this. And so a lot of good work being done.
And, and just a project timeline, the construction of the pool. And we have to relocate an irrigation ditch that's going to start later this month. That's what it says. So we're still on schedule for that. So should start seeing some activity out there digging. So sanitary sewers, we had two major sewer interceptors destroyed during the flood. One with the infamous pumping that's still going on out near Main Street. That's trunk three, you know. That pump doesn't look that formidable and stuff, but that trunk three area serves a big part of the Southmore Park area of the city. So it's actually impacting a big area of the Longmont community that's going on out there. And then on top of that, Interceptor F, which went through the Harvest Junction site, that serves all the area down in the Pike neighborhood, the Prospect area. And again, is another major interceptor. So the, we will be opening the bids on Interceptor F this Thursday and getting that construction underway so that we can beat the runoff. One of the things we're doing with these two interceptors, we used to have them both crossing the river. One right under Main Street, trunk three. And then Interceptor F to the east. And what we've done, again, working with FEMA on hazard mitigation is we are, we are eliminating the crossing of trunk three. And we're going to take it to the east and tie it into Interceptor F. So we eliminate one crossing of the St. Brain with sanitary sewer, which is probably always a good thing if you can have less utilities crossing.
One of the things that I want to talk about this and this project is a really good example is behind all of these projects, and what we see is a lot of work being done by Public Works and Natural Resources. But behind every one of these projects, we have a host of staff that's working on it from a purchasing perspective, a budget perspective, dealing with FEMA. And the, is Interceptor F, is that the one at the, what's the one at the Main Street Bridge?
Trunk three.
Trunk three. That is a project right now where we have about five folks working with FEMA so they understand why we're doing it. Because they go, why are you still pumping it? We have to explain that we don't want to build it and tear it down. And so if you look at the documentation and the staff that's involved in putting that together, it's literally too big to even put on a jump drive in terms of the information and what we're having to do with, put together for FEMA. So I really wanted to point out that behind all of these projects, there are a number of staff people that are trying to support in bringing these forward.
Yeah, it's, it's actually easy for me to just stand up here and walk through them. That's the easy part. So the overall cost estimates, we've broken this slide up. You've seen slides before that showed our number around 135 to 150 million. And I've always said it's going to fluctuate. So this is about 135 million. And we're breaking it up a little differently between recovery and protection. Protection, we've always sort of talked about as resiliency and primarily the river channel. That's still the case, but there's actually portions of the river channel that involve recovery, especially in the areas of Dickens Park and Isaac Walton, and also for some of the parks and trails. And so we think the entire, the entire river channel, including the city reach, as well as the stuff out at Sandstone Ranch, is now in that $100 million range with about 90 million being the river reach and about 10 million being out in the sandstone range. So it's gone up a little bit from where we thought. We thought we were around 80 to 85 million for the city reach. And again, frankly, we'll know a heck of a lot more when we get the designs done and bids out. One of the challenges we're seeing, we just opened the bids on our concrete replacement program for this year. And our unit prices are double what they were last year. And so there are, we're hoping though that we get lower asphalt prices if we can keep the price of oil down at least for another few months. But some of the prices are going up quite, quite high. So we think our funding gap is still in that $30 million range, 35 million. And that's the work that Harold and just all kinds of people are working on, both with the Corps of Engineers, where we have applications in for grants, as well as the CDBGDR funds. And I think on the CDBGDR, we should have some much better idea of the amount of dollars that we're going to be coming into Longmont probably over the next three to four months, which should time out really well with our design going into final design. So the next slide just shows the two peaks. Our guys are getting a little higher up the peak. They've still got a long ways to go, which means we still have a lot of money that we're going to be spending. And I just wanted to share real quickly some of the, some of the work that Holly Milne and her team are doing with sharing the information, everything from social media to CityLine to different updates on our website. Is anybody up to see a quick video of one of our project managers? It's actually pretty good. And I don't know if I can, oh yeah, I guess I can. So this is a real quick little video. We'll see if it runs. This is Tom Caparella. So will we have sound? Yes, we do. Gosh, it works.
My name is Tom Caparella, I'm the project manager of the City of Longmont. January 2015, on the St. Green Greenway Trail. This is a FEMA flood recovery project, which covers approximately two and a half miles of the St. Green Greenway Trail from left hand street to right. After the flood of September 2015, we were able to get a design consultant on board to begin design on the Greenway Trail in early January of 2015. The design lasted approximately a month, and started through August of 2015. We started construction on this project in September. The reason for that being that there are few effective migratory birds in the area. There's a bald eagle's nest that sits over by County Line Road, and there are persuasive hawk nests that sit just to the northwest of the one that we just built. So our window of work on this project went from early September to the beginning of March 2015. Due to the major movement of property around the area, and the tram track right there, the water, when the flood, you know, the flood came through, um, the water was rerouted from the original channel and was shot up towards the field. And this field, you can see we scraped off, but originally when we began the project, this field was covered in, from anywhere from three to six feet of, of silt, large rock, um, cobble, all that type of river deposition. So this area, we continually scraped off to provide drainage back to the site, and we often use that to maintain our trail. So, most of our work was to restore the trail to its pre-plussed condition. We weren't allowed to, to replace the trail slightly differently than the field's original position, which actually took quite a time to heal. Originally that trail, it came straight out from the bridge and came in line, pretty much the same as it is now. Our design consultant asked us to do something, and we agreed to re-alarm the trail to a further degree, and offer the armor extension to the trail, while heading due in 2020. This area is specifically, this field starts at this, um, soil retention point here, and goes up to just above the bridge, just above our mitigation area, um, an area which we were able to redesign it so that it's not susceptible to the same damage that it experienced during the, the 2013 flood. So now that the project is completed, the public will be able to access the St. Green Greenway Trail from both the County Line Road Trail and the 119th Street Trail. This trail will allow the public to, to make the trail all the way through the left-hand trail system. So this marks another major project for the City of Longmont as being explored in our first recovery effort.
So Tom Caparella is one of our, uh, our newer, um, project managers, and, um, has done a great job for us, and, uh, as have all the folks on Kim's staff and Nick's staff, putting in huge, huge hours to, uh, to move us through these things. And so, I'll end it with, so where did we go from here? And so on February 9th, we, we held a, a meeting of, of three of the boards, uh, the Board of Environmental Affairs, the Parks and Recreation Board, and the Transportation Advisory Board, to look at the St. Green Creek Improvement Project and the Blueprint Project in tandem. And so that, because they're really, are, are separable, you need to look at those things together. I think we had a pretty good meeting with those boards. Each of those boards are now going to be looking at it individually at their board meetings in March, in, in preparation of coming up City Council on March 24th, when the overall presentation, uh, to you of the Blueprint Project and the St. Green Creek Improvement Project. Also on that day, we'll be holding an open house on the 24th up in the mall area, uh, for the public to see all the information, and that is an important part of, uh, the, the NEPA process. And so we'll also be holding a public hearing on the NEPA environmental permitting for the St. Green Project that night. On March 4th, we're going to have, uh, an open house for the Focus on South Main Project. I didn't spend a lot of time talking about that tonight, but that's a series of projects, including the Main Street Bridge, Main Street repaving, um, and Dickens Park. And that meeting's going to be on March 4th at the library meeting rooms from 4:30 to 6:30, and again, it's an open house format, again, to connect with the public and, and let them come in and, and look at, see where we are with it. In May and June, we will be completing the preliminary design on the St. Green Creek. Uh, we'll have another, uh, open house at that time. Hopefully in June, we're going to be opening up Button Rock, so maybe that could be a council road trip to, uh, go up and have some fun at Button Rock when we open it, and maybe not get lost this time. And then, um, we'll, we'll have Harold lead us. And then, um, we'll be doing, uh, going into the final construction, or excuse me, um, final design for the St. Green Project in, in anticipation for construction, so. That took a while, but, um, that's our update for now, and if you have any questions, I will, I, Kim, Nick will field those, otherwise, we can be done.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions, but appreciate the update.
Great, thank you.
Captain Mago Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor Cruz. I'm going to have to excuse myself, I've got court early tomorrow morning, and, uh, if I don't, uh, take this responsible seriously, responsibility seriously, uh, somebody's going to get screwed, so I need, I need to step out. But, uh, I have, if I have any other questions regarding what you're going to go over, I think I get it, but if I have other questions, I'll give you a call tomorrow. Okay, sound good? And I'll watch this on video. Don't think, do anything important without me tonight, and don't forget the judge.
Mayor Jim Golden is here to present your last item, priority-based budgeting update.
Okay.
Mayor Cruz's members, Council, I'm Jim Golden, Director of Finance. A couple of weeks ago, we were here, and we made the first of our update presentations on that priority-based budgeting. Our intent to make a somewhat similar presentation here. I want to try to shorten it up where I can, but at the same time, I do want to provide enough background so that if any of the public's viewing this for the first time, they're going to at least be able to, to follow the concepts through and understand this and take it in context. So bear with me if I'm redundant on some of the concepts that we reviewed with you. Uh, and also, again, as I said in the first presentation, if you want to give us any sort of direction on how to do these in, in the future, because we do have, uh, another 10 more to go through, then, um, I'm all ears for that later here. So, uh, we first started doing this in 2010, implementing the budgeting, uh, priority-based budgeting concepts. Last year, we made a comprehensive effort to fully implement it. We, uh, secured the RAD tool, which is, um, a resource alignment diagnostic tool from the consultants for priority-based budgeting. And then council got some summary information last summer, and where we left it there was that we would bring back more detailed information for you all, so that you could take a closer look at the programs and how their scoring has impacted. And that's what we are undertaking currently. So... So in priority-based budgeting, we do break down all that the city does into individual programs, and we evaluate each of those programs against, uh, the desired results that have been identified by the city council, and against key program attributes. And each of them is given a score from between zero and four, for how each of those programs influences the results or, or attributes. These are the desired results that, uh, city council identified for community programs, and this is, uh, the weightings that, uh, the community assigned to those, that we, uh, landed on through a community involvement process last spring. These are the desired results for the governance programs. Those would be the programs that, uh, are not going directly to the public, but are serving the organization. And there were five desired results, uh, they're all equally weighted. Uh, and these again, were identified by the city council, these are the first two here. And the final three, uh, desired results for governance programs. And then there were four attributes that are part of the process that were designed by the priority-based budgeting consultants. Each of those are equally weighted in the scoring process. A mandate to provide the program is the attribute that we, um, reviewed two weeks ago. Then we have reliance on the city to provide the program, cost recovery of the program, and the portion of the community served by the program. So we'll be going through two more of those tonight. Again, citywide, we had 1,244 programs identified, 527 of those were within the city's general fund. And then, uh, the consultants identified 737 distinct programs, uh, within the city. Uh, so the difference between the 737 and 1,244 is some redundancy in programs that we find from different funding sources. So, what we do is evaluate all the programs against the, the four attributes and the desired results, four or five desired results, to come up with an overall score, and, uh, that score, um, is, um, place, places a, a program in the quartiles from quartile one through quartile four. Quartile one is the scores that are coming the highest, they have the highest influence over the desired results and the attributes. And then likewise, the programs in quartile four, they score the lowest and have the least influence. So these, these results can serve as a guide for us as we go through, uh, future budgets, or in the allocation of, of future resources. So when we have new resources available, we should strive to put those towards, um, programs in quartile one or two, or, uh, put less new resources towards, uh, programs maybe in quartile three and four. And we should get careful consideration about adding any new programs that, that would only score maybe in, in the fourth or third quartiles. And whenever a new program is proposed, we do evaluate and score those programs, uh, and we'll do that going forward. And, uh, you did hear about the curbside, uh, program tonight, that, that actually comes in as a, um, uh, quartile two program scoring. So again, we've been preparing 13 different reports, and I ask you to try not to jump to early conclusions when you just see one or two, three reports, try to get all the information before you get, uh, uh, you know, and then, uh, get an idea of, of reacting to them, see how these programs influence each of these results and attributes. So the first one tonight is the portion of community served. That is defined, um, by the, um, consultants for priority-based budgeting as follows. So they have a scoring of from four to zero, the four being high. A program, a portion of community served based on the program benefits or serves the entire community, so it has to, you serve 100% of the community, that rates a four. If it serves at least 75% of the community, substantial portion, that's a three. At least 50% of the community is a significant one, that's a two. And then we have, um, programs that serve some portion of the community, so that would be at least 10%, anywhere between 10 and 50% that would fall. And finally, uh, zero score for anything that's less than 10%, a small portion of the community. Uh, again, this is within your packet, it's, um, it's on page 137 of your packet tonight. This is our, our summary of the, uh, overall scoring by departments. Um, it's also, it's page 137, or else page four of the prioritization update on the portion of community served. So if you look at your package, you can see this information a lot better, but what you could see with the highlights is where we have the highest amount of dollars going in each of the five different categories, um, by, by department. So the ones in greens are dollars, and the ones in yellow or orange are the, uh, most amount of programs falling in those categories. So, um, just summarizing those, a number of programs. First, Public Safety has the most programs benefiting or serving the entire community, that's 94 programs. Public Works Natural Resources has the most programs benefiting or serving a substantial portion of the community, 104 programs. Public Works Natural Resources is the most programs benefiting a significant portion of the community at 147. And again, now you can tell Public Works, of course, has the most programs, and so they're coming up most often in this one, for having the most programs in each of the areas. In the some portion, there's 135 programs, and in the small portion, they have 82. And cost of programs is a little bit different. Power Communications, of course, has the highest cost program, and so the one that serves the entire community, they have almost $58 million towards, uh, that category. Public Works Natural Resources has the most dollars for the substantial portion of the community, at 10.2 million. They, uh, Public Works and Natural Resources has the most programs cost for a significant portion of the community at 9.9 million. And then Community Service has the highest cost of program serving some portion of the community, 7.7 million. And also Community Service has the highest cost of program benefiting a small portion of the community. At 3.6 million, 3.36 million. So, okay. No, well, you can in a second, I'm just looking, yeah, go ahead and, and start pulling the model up. So we, I'm missing a slide, and that's why I was just checking, but you can go ahead and pull that while I'm talking about it. So, we've got, uh, 527 programs in the city's general fund, and that accounts for, um, $65.4 million budget. So the highlights of the general fund programs, you can find those also on the same page, page four at the bottom. Again, page 137 of the pack, of the packet tonight. I'm going to take you through, uh, each one of those, but through using the RAD tool dashboard, and, um, those dashboard views are also within the pages of your council packet. The first five dashboard views are there that show all city programs, all 1,244 city programs. Going to skip those and go to the ones, the second five past those, which are the ones on page four, 143 through 147, we'll just be looking at the general fund programs. So... Let me pull it up myself. I can't see that any better than they can. So beginning on page, uh, 143, you can see that what you've got there is, um, the dashboard view from the RAD tool for the general fund, for the entire community served. And, uh, you can see in the lower right corners here that you've got 142 programs shown there that are benefiting, serving the entire community at a budget of 31.8 million dollars. But you can see on the RAD tool, it's breaking it out by quartiles, so where each of these individual programs score overall, not just, uh, not, not for, um, prior, portion of the community served, but its overall program score. So you can see that most of the dollars are showing up at, in the, um, quartile one, $18.8 million for 79 programs that, um, fall under, um, serving the entire community. So overall, the 142 programs are at 31.8 million dollars, they, that's 48%, 48.7% of the general fund budget. I'm going to ask Theresa to take, pull the next one up. We're going to the program.
Captain Mago.
Hey Jim, um, what you're showing us doesn't match what's in our packet. Is there a reason for that?
So it's on page 143. You got 145? All right, I don't know why I have different page numbers than you do, but you should be looking at the one that has on the top, general fund and entire community served. Is that on 145? Okay, so then I will try to adjust my references then. All right, so then the next page, you just turn the page to 146, is, uh, general fund and substantial portion of the community served. Are we good?
Yeah. If you just go to the page number to the far left, it's 143. If you're just looking at your electronic page number, it's 145. That's the, so just go by the page number on the far left corner, the printed page number is 143. That's the difference.
All right.
So you're matching up to...
So the next, the next view is of the substantial portion of the community served for the general fund. This one is 61 programs at 10.8 million dollars. This one is 61 programs at $10.8 million, and it's 16.5% of the general fund budget. Again, we're showing those by quartile. You can see most of those are in the first two quartiles. Good deal in the third as well, but very little in the fourth quartile. Next view is going to be of the significant portion of the community served, next page. Okay. And this one, again, this has got 106 programs that benefit a significant portion of the community. They're budgeted at $9.77 million. That's almost 15% of the general fund budget. So the next is some portion of the community served, so this is anywhere between 10 to 49% of the community being served. And we got 151 programs in there, budgeted at $11.1 million, and that's 17% of the general fund budget. And the highest number here is in the second quartile. And going into the last category is programs benefiting, serving only a small portion of the community, which would be less than 10%. There's 67 programs in the general fund there, budgeted at $1.7 million, so 2.6% of the general fund budget. So on, on, going back to page four of this update, which I am not even going to try to, I thought it was on page 137, but underneath the summary that was in that update, so final statement on that page, it's, for some reason, I struggle with the range of the attribute levels for this one. So I need to correct that final statement that I included on that page. So the correct statement is that there are 67 general fund programs, 12.7% and $1.7 million of the general fund budget that are programs that benefit or serve less than 10% of the community. So the numbers I included in that final statement are that there are 218 general fund programs, but it's 41.3%, 12.8 million of the general fund budget, 19.6%. That represents programs that benefit or serve less than 50% of the community. So I made an incorrect statement in there that it serves 10% or less. We're going to make the correction to this before we put that back out on the final posting on the internet pages that we'll be putting together for the prioritization updates. Sorry about that, but as confusing to some of our peer review groups as it was to me. So after the snapshot pages, what we've included in there are two lists. One, we have included them all with the individual program level and the detail. The first list is of all, well, the list are of all 1,244 programs and how they score against the mandate, against the portion of community served attribute. But what we do is we are, have one list for general fund programs and one list for all other funds. We include the detail there by department and division, program costs, the funding source, the number of program FTE. So you are able to follow it by the, sorted by the attribute, should be mandate, but it's the attribute, department and the division, and then the quartile. And when we get into quartile, it's actually listed from the lowest quartile to the highest quartile, which is something we'll probably also change in our, our future updates to the reverse of that. So before I move on to the next attribute, I just want to check and make sure if there's any further questions on the portion of community served attribute. Councilmember Levison?
I'm sorry, I missed the February 3rd first report, so I don't know, I don't recall if you were going to set up a, a space on the website that'll collect all this information. And then I'm assuming you'll just put the corrected version with those notations, just the correct version on there so that people can track.
That's correct. We will do that.
Thank you.
So the second one tonight here is the reliance on the city to provide the program. So that, if you get past all those lists, it's somewhere around 187 or so is where you get to the, the next update report. So breaking down the, the different levels of the reliance on the city that, that, as they are defined by the priority-based budgeting consultants. Again, we have a scoring from a high of a four to a low of a zero. Reliance on the city is, is looking at how the services are provided and where else can you get those services. So in this case, the highest score is where the city is the sole provider of the program, and there are no other public or private entities that provide a similar service. And the next level is where the city is currently the sole provider of the program, but there are other public or private entities that could be contracted to provide similar service. Two score is where a program is offered by, only by, besides the city, is offered by another governmental nonprofit or civic agency. And a one score is where a program is offered by other private businesses but not located within the city limits. And finally, a zero score is if we are offering a program that is also offered by other private businesses located within the city limits. So again, we get into this worksheet that shows the highest areas of programs and budget dollars across the general fund and across these five level of attributes. The highs are in the number of programs. Public Safety has the most programs for where the city is the sole provider. They have 92 programs, and there are no other public or private entities providing a similar service. In the next level, Public Works Natural Resources has 410 programs where the city is the sole provider, but there are other public or private entities that could be contracted to provide The next is that Community Services has the most programs that are offered elsewhere only by another governmental nonprofit or civic agency. That's 49 programs. And then the next category, and you can tell looking at the summary, that we do not have a lot of, of programs citywide that fall in the category, that they're offered by another private, another private business, but that they're not located within the city limits. Public Works Natural Resources is the highest with six programs there. And then finally, programs that are offered by other private businesses located within the city limits. Community Services has the most of those programs at 50. Looking at the cost of programs, again, Power...
Councilmember Levison, would you like to ask a question?
Yeah. When we are considering whether an alternate to, I mean, other private businesses offer the same service, isn't there any consideration given to how much more it might cost? Because why would we consider hiring someone else to provide the same service for more when we can provide it for less?
And, and that could be a consideration, but as far as evaluating it for these scores, all we're trying to do is see, is it being provided elsewhere?
Right.
I mean, you might make an individual determination about a program and whether we should continue or put more resources toward it based on price, but the overall score is being driven just on whether or not you can get it elsewhere.
Okay.
Those are the questions that as you start taking all of the information that you then start asking about these programs, and you go, are we providing it for a lower cost? If so, why? And so it's just a series of questions that will evolve out of the data.
So now getting into the cost of programs, highest of those...
Councilmember Levison has a question.
Thank you. I guess the other, the question I had pertaining to the programs where there are other nonprofit agency providers, would that also be programs in the area of community services especially that offer services and then we support their service providing through the budget with Housing and Human Service Advisory Board?
Are you asking about the actual programs that we, we...
Yeah, so we may provide some portion of the program.
Right.
But, and then we may also be supporting those nonprofits that work in that area through another part of the city budget. Or is that program, for example, the, you know, the money we set aside in the general fund budget for human service agencies outside of the scope of, of this kind of metric?
Mayor Coombs members of council, all the, all the general fund dollars or citywide dollars, but most of the, we're talking general fund right now in that respect, but they are all programmed into here, but I think they're programmed separately, separate programs. And I think Theresa's looking at that up currently, but... But if, but if the city's providing the program, it would be separate program from the human service agency. So they're shown separately and scored separately.
Okay. All right. Well, and I guess if you wanted to look at the 49 programs, you provided a list of every single one of them.
Right. But it is a consideration, though, if we're providing that program and some agency elsewhere nonprofit is doing so, that's going to drive the score for that program that we're providing. So again, getting...
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just, I took a seminar in the city of Centennial. Their entire public safety is contracted out. So I'm not sure that it's exactly accurate to say that the weighting of that is correct on ours. The city's the sole provider. It's, it is, but it, there are others that provide those services.
So Mayor Coombs, there was a council, and, and I was on this peer review group, and it drove us crazy, but so, so it's, it, it, there is a question about whether it's available and can, and can you get that here? And, and I think we had that discussion about a lot of different services and, and different departments had a different perspective on that. I think there's a lot of Public Works, Works and Natural Resources programs that we, we did, that we were being scored, that you could do that because of what, exactly what you point out, because another city can do it and get that done elsewhere by a private contractor, so why couldn't this as well? So I think that's a good point, and there was a lot of debate about that from different perspectives, but we, yes, it is true.
Can I ask a quick question?
Councilmember Levison?
Well, when we were talking, when you were mentioning that Public Safety had the highest number of programs, I was thinking, well, there are private security companies. So if you wanted to hire a private security company to provide security for your city, you could do that. I know, but conceivably, there is a private contractor out there that would provide, I mean, after all, you know, the US government hires Blackwater to provide security in, you know, for embassies and every, other places in the world, but, you know, conceivably, anything that is provided could be, you could find somebody somewhere to provide that service.
Agreed. And I, but the thing is, can you, can you find somebody to provide it here? And that is what we got into a lot of debate about today, right? So can, so the question is, where, where the consultants go with is, so does, does the community have another choice for this service? Okay? And that was where that this kind of boils down to. Today, there are security services that might provide some of the programs that Public Safety does today, but probably not most of the programs. And we broke Public Safety down pretty significantly. It's not just a couple of programs there. So that's how, that's what's driving those scores. Should I move on? Quickly. All right. So then Power and Communications is the highest cost of programs for where the city is the sole provider at $58.6 million. Public Works Natural Resources is the highest cost where the city is the sole provider, but there are the public and private entities that could be contracted. That's a $30.7 million. Community Services has the highest cost of programs offered elsewhere by another governmental nonprofit or civic agency at $2.9 million. And Public Safety has the highest cost of programs offered by other private businesses, but none are located within the city limits, but only at $257,000, so not very many. And then Community Services is the highest cost of programs offered by other private businesses located within the city limits, and that's $6.4 million. So programs where the city is the sole provider and that there are no, so getting into the general fund highlights, and you can move to start to pull those up. There are 166 programs budgeted at $27.5 million, which is 42% of the general fund budget, where the city is the sole provider, and there are no public or private entities that provide a similar service. So again, general fund wise, we have, again, 527 programs, $65.4 million budget. And so the summary is at the bottom of page, well, 191 is what I have. Underneath that summary is the general fund highlights, which we will take you through on the RAD tool. So again, the first five snapshots following that summary are for all, all citywide programs, and then getting to the general fund summary, page 11 of the update, and around 198 or 200 of your packet probably. So starting with the general fund where the city is the sole provider. You tracking with me then? Okay. So we have 166 programs, $27.5 million, 42% of the total overall general fund budget. So what programs where the city is the sole provider, but there are other public or private entities that could be contracted to provide a similar service. It's the second snapshot, there's 268 programs, is budgeted at $31 million, and that's 47.4% of the general fund budget. And then next, you've got programs that are offered by another governmental nonprofit or civic agency. There's 44 programs, $2.4 million of budget, which is 3.6 million, 3.6% of the general fund budget. Programs offered by other private businesses, but none are located within the city limits. Only have seven programs here, budgeted at $363,000, which is about a half percent, half of percent of the general fund budget. And then finally, program is offered by other private businesses located within the city limits. We have 42 programs, and the general fund budgeted at $4.1 million, and that's 6.3% of the total general fund budget. So you can summarize, there are 93 general fund programs at $6.8 million of the general fund program, general fund budget that are programs for which the city is, is not the sole provider. so finally, again, I'm not going to repeat myself on the list. You have both lists. So, so finally, again, I'm not gonna repeat myself on the list, you have both lists there, and break those down by the general fund and all other funds programs. Just wanna summarize that we are still working to provide the complete list of programs and their definitions for y'all, and that will be hopefully available this week. It is a monster file, so it's taken some time to put that together, and we're doing some editing to it as well to make sure that all of the definitions are current. But once we get that complete, we will get it to you, we also have access on the city's webpage, and also all the underlying data available that supports this information will also be made available on the webpage. We did meet with the consultants for priority-based budgeting since we last met with you, and talked to them about the online version of the Rad Tool, and we, it'll probably be available to us later this year, but we don't expect that we'll probably be able to see that ourselves or use it, or until about mid-year most likely. So, again, we're gonna continue to accelerate the frequency of these reports in March, since we don't have a couple, don't have another study session or a meeting until at least March 17th where we can bring any of these forward to you. If you prefer to receive them as information items and forego the presentations, just let us know, but we will continue to bring them forward or get them to you so that we can try to get through all 13 of these before we get ourselves deep into the budget process in the second quarter. Further questions?
Well, just a comment, I think that after a few of these get the flavor of how they work and everything, I think, I'd be in favor of, at some point, I mean, I appreciate getting the understanding and doing a few of these this way, but I think just having as information items would fit my desire, as opposed to doing it at, you know, a study session, council meeting, but, that's just me.
Councilmember Levinson?
Well, I would recommend maybe a hybrid approach, just because we do have, if we are gonna use this tool, I think having the presentations, you know, live at a council meeting is a lot different than being in the information session, section of our packet. The hybrid approach maybe is that if you could put a couple of these in the can over at Channel 8 to do the presentation by video, that would be maybe the hybrid approach that, because, you know, people have different learning styles, and it's really, it made a lot clearer for you to go through that after the explanation than when I was at home trying to fit, like, I couldn't see the whole picture very well. So, I think you helped us see the whole picture, and I appreciate your effort. And it's also a very complex way of looking at the analytics on all of this, and I think we've, we're really gonna use this tool. We don't, we're not just the ones that have to have the understanding of it, it's gotta be very transparent to the public if we're basing decisions on it.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I had a similar thought that perhaps you could put those on YouTube so we could watch them when we have time, because I find it helpful, your explanation's helpful, but you know, I could watch that at my leisure if you put it on YouTube.
I don't see any further questions. Thank you, Jim.
Sounds good.
Thanks. Okay, so now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. My business of the week, and in honor of Fat Tuesday, which it is, is Lucille's Creole Cafe at 518 Kimbark. They have wonderful food, and it'll make you think you're back in New Orleans at the Mardi Gras.
Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you. Just wanna remind council and the rest of the community that we've got a really big day coming up on February 28th. We've got Chinese New Year in the afternoon at Silver Creek High School from 2 to 5, and then the El Comité fundraising dinner is pretty much right, right after that, and that will be, you can contact the Asian Pacific Association of Longmont for information on the Chinese New Year event, and El Comité directly for tickets, and they've got a couple of good speakers this year, including Sheriff Joe Pele, so, hope everybody can make it.
Alright, city manager, any comments?
No comments, Mayor Council.
City attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, we were gonna direct you to put on the agenda to discuss the judge's review and compensation on a future council, so I just wonder if you could do that for us.
Okay. Other than that, this meeting is adjourned.